Are we good? All right, we're on, but hold on one second. Still admitting people that they're having technical difficulties with the TV in the back of the room, so I can't see what's going on. I need that TV on, yes, please. Okay. Bear with us. Okay, Lauren, go ahead.
Well, I think I can probably start the introductions, right?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
There's a weird box on that in the top, but...
I don't know how to get rid of it. Sorry, I don't know how to get rid of that weird box at the top.
All right, okay.
So, but we're good to go.
All right, let's go. All right, good afternoon, Millis, and to everybody assembled on this Zoom forum. My name is Lauren Barnes. I'm the chairperson of the Millis Select Board. I'd like to welcome everybody to the open session meeting of Monday, April 27, 2020, and thank you for joining us. You will be hearing from time to time from members of our town government leadership, as well as participants from various boards and committees, and hopefully members of our community as well, as we have in the past. As soon as I'm done with introductions, we will certainly look to have that type of engagement. We work very hard to recognize you, so we just ask everybody to bear with us and indicate that you have a question to ask by either hitting your profile and raising your hand, or if you have to wave, and between all of us, we will try and acknowledge you. While you are participating in the meeting, best practice is that you actually mute your profile, because you may be unaware of it, but whether it's a phone ring, or a dog barking, or even just pushing papers on your desk, ambient noise can be very distracting to listeners. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. And barring any questions, I'd like to acknowledge the contributions in advance and for today of my board colleagues, James Gazinsky, there you go, James McCaffrey, Peter Germaine, our town administrator, Michael Gazinsky, Karen Burey as our operations director and tech triage today, and certainly Carol Johnston, and all the members of the finance team, the finance committee, and all of our department heads. We have a very ambitious meeting, and I am going to try and manage the clock extremely tightly. I appreciate everybody trying not to repeat questions that have been answered, but that's not in any way intended to squelch participation. A couple of early announcements. If there's any other questions, are there any other questions from the floor before we begin? Hearing none. We have a couple of community announcements, the first of which is by our town clerk, Lisa Harden, with respect to the town election and absentee ballot availability. So Lisa, you have to unmute.
I think I am unmuted.
Okay.
But I can't see the slide now.
Well, you wrote the content. Basically, the announcement is...
Can you see it now?
No, but that's all right. I was seeing it just until you announced me. But I can't really say yet.
No one can see it, Karen.
Hold on. How about now?
Karen, open up. Let me be a co-host, and I'll throw it up.
Yeah, I don't know why this is giving me trouble.
Well, we have to figure this out with Mills Community Media, because it should be a lot more fluid, but we'll work on that.
Now, this is us. This is me, sorry.
All right, is that you? We got to get rid of that box. I don't understand what that box is.
I don't know why that box is on there. Can you see that it says "election prep" now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But do you want me to use mine, so it doesn't have the box on it?
Yes, if you can. Let me get out of this then. Hold on then.
Just open up the share, so I can throw the slide up.
Yeah, there you go. So, did you hit screen share?
I am trying to do it.
There we go.
All right.
All right, now it's Lauren. That's fine, if it runs better through you.
Well, I'm only doing this one slide. So Lisa, there you go. There, it's a two-pronged conversation. One is to tell the community that they can get absentee and early ballots now, and also that you're recruiting election workers.
Okay, yes. Assuming that your meeting goes as we expected to, the new election date is going to be June 22 rather than June 1, and we will be open the usual voting hours, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a Monday, as usual, but we are asking people, if at all possible, to vote by mail using the absentee ballot application or the early voting ballot application. Either one is fine. They're both available at millissmass.gov. We're going to make it a little easier to get at it, which isn't true today, but it will be this week, and they're also both available through the Secretary of State's website. We will also accept any kind of application, as long as it has a signature, so your name, address, phone number, and your signature. And even if you call and don't send us a signature, we will mail you the application along with the ballot. We don't currently have the ballot. We will probably have them next week, and so they'll be ready to go, and we just need to receive it back by election day. In terms of paid election workers, we're first going to try and get town employees who are currently possibly working from home to do some of the hours, and the regular election workers. It's just that we have a high percentage of election workers who are over 65, and we're not sure at this point if they will be able or willing to work, both preparing to send out absentee ballots and on election day.
Okay, I have a question for the town and for my colleagues. It's kind of a two-pronged question in no particular order. The first one is, I am uncomfortable with an in-person town meeting at this particular hour, which is why I actually had the legislation that was filed for a representative town meeting by another town in Massachusetts, and asked that it be shared with everybody. I feel that, based on the information at this moment, and knowing that the governor on May 4 is apparently, that was set as kind of a watershed date for forthcoming policies for various functions of government governed life across the state, I can only see an in-person town meeting if, in fact, people were siloed in classrooms, and we were using something analogous to Zoom to connect them. And I realize that we don't have this piece of information now, but I have to be really honest with you. If we're telling students and teachers, and the town's residents, that they can't go into town buildings, I can't see why it is that we would feel comfortable with necessarily having that in place and not giving ourselves some time to explore potential alternatives that are in the process of being developed in these very uncertain and unprecedented times. And one of the ideas, I just want to acknowledge that what that does is, there's no perfect solution to this, but one of the things that does exist is that there is, in fact, a deployment right now of iPads and mobile equipment that are in use by students. And it seems to me that if one of the things that emerges across the state is potentially moving by lawfully a town meeting process to an online venue, that we could, in fact, issue with instructions some of that technology to people who otherwise might not have it. And again, I want to acknowledge, this is not a perfect situation, and these are unprecedented times, but I want to say on the record that for my family, for myself, and for the people I love, I don't feel comfortable coming into a public building, and I don't know why we would be advocating for that to occur.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I did contact Town Council earlier today, just to get some clarifications on the legal aspects of this matter. Certainly, some towns, a few towns are considering having town meetings outdoors. I know that both our current town moderator and our town council have concerns about that because of the sound issues and the control issues of such a meeting. And I know, as you had said, that the legislature is currently looking at alternate ways for town meetings to conduct their business in light of the pandemic. What Town Council has recommended as far as the location of a town meeting and the method, I wish it's held that, if at all possible, for the town to hold off a few more weeks to see if we can get more clarity from the state as to what tools ultimately we'll have. That's still a moving target. So even if the board decides to consider whether or not to push the dates of the town election and town meeting later into June, that, you know, the methodology and the place of those events, more specifically the town meeting in this case, can be held off a few more weeks, that will allow him to get clear picture from the state as to what will be allowed, so we can have perhaps more options to work with.
Do my colleagues have anything to add to this?
I had a discussion with some people, thinking that we might be able to have it in the gym, and the chairs, we're expecting a much lower turnout, and the chairs could be, you know, six to 10 feet apart, and they are already set up, because they've done graduations there, to have audio in there, that that might work, instead of in the auditorium.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we, is this a discussion on whether we're going to change dates or anything, or is this just talking in general about...
I think it's probably talking in general, but because the town clerk wanted to be kind of specific to the dates that were discussed at a meeting fairly recently, there was a discussion with an organized group, I think Jim McCaffrey was part of that group, and some other people. We're looking at potentially moving the dates, and I'm just thinking that between now and our next board meeting, I don't see that we would necessarily have to pick those dates, because a lot of this information coming from the state is going to affect those.
I'm tending to lean in your direction. I recognize what the meeting had resolved, at least as to what I got about that meeting. I have some thoughts on it, but it seems to me we can delay any further discussion on specific dates for another week or two before we have to make a decision.
May I speak?
Yeah.
If the election is not going to be any earlier than June 22, I would appreciate a vote to that date, so that I can order the ballots tomorrow with that date, and you can always push it off further than that, but I would then have ballots that I could send out for absentee voting, and they would still be good, no matter what date you pick after that. But I'm assuming that it sounds like it's not going to be June 1, so could we at least put it off to June 22? And I don't care about the town meeting date, because that doesn't affect the ballots.
I actually have a question about that, which I've always wondered about, which is, I would propose re-sequencing town meeting and the election for the following reason. When you come to town meeting, the residents are having a conversation with the leadership who have worked really hard in the development and the rationale of very tough budget decisions, and you have a moderator. And this year, we have a situation where it is, in all likelihood, we're going to be having a changing of the guard in the moderator role, and we're going to be having new people on, obviously, the finance committee and the select board at a minimum, and it seems to me that the people who were, in fact, the original participants in the development of the budget should be able to represent those decisions on the front end, and then you don't have the pressure on, in particular, the moderator, to run a meeting cold. You have a veteran moderator who can run the town meeting, and then the election comes afterwards. So my proposal, if in fact we're looking at changing dates, is I would propose flipping the sequence. It seems to me to make a lot more sense.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Couple of comments. In terms of setting the election date and the town meeting date without determining the venue, I think an important component of this is communicating to the town, to the best of our ability, given all that we know, when these critical town permanent functions will occur, knowing full well that we may be required to push them off, and at this point in time, we have the authority to push a town meeting beyond July 1. We do not have the authority with the election, that we're better off making a date, giving people notice that's what it is, so that they can plan ahead, frankly, at noble goal. So I'm really in favor of setting the date. If we find that we have authority to change the nature of the meeting particularly, well then we can deal with that. And the way the legislation, it's really the moderator's call to ask whether to create a virtual meeting unless some new legislation comes along. I'm not going to speculate on that, because I really think that that fundamentally changes the nature of the town meeting. In terms of the sequence, I believe that I'm in favor of a sequence which has the meeting occurring before the town election. However, I do not favor doing it this year, because the sequence of events is established in the bylaw adopted by the town meeting. I think it is upon us, if we believe that that's the right way to go, to bring a bylaw recommendation to the town meeting, so the town meeting can change that sequence. The issues that you raise about, what do you want to call it, the inconvenience or the rationale behind the sequence, I agree with that, actually, but I don't feel comfortable changing the sequence of events, the sequence of events that has been adopted by the town meeting. And so I would not be in favor of doing that this year, but I would be in favor of presenting a ballot, I'm sorry, a bylaw change proposal, that would, in fact, accomplish in the future what you've suggested, for the reasons that you set. So I, you know, maybe it's a fine point, but, you know, I'm a firm believer in following what the town meeting has decided and recommended, that the town meeting make changes, rather than the board make a unilateral change.
I just want to respond to that, and thank you, Jim. And I actually, the Town Council indicated that it would be our call if we wanted to swap the order.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the Town Council said that we have the authority to do it.
Right.
And say whether we should do it. I believe we have the authority. I believe we should defer that decision, although it's been able to bring it before the town meeting. That's just the way I look at the sequence of events, because the sequence of events, you know, is established by the town meeting, and is established by the voters of the town, the other ones who decided. So I respect their sequencing order, and propose to them in the future to change the order.
Peter?
I tend to agree with what my colleague is saying, but I'd like to suggest that perhaps if we at least expand the time between the vote and the town meeting, it would give people who are newly elected, assuming for the board, we know we're going to have at least one new member, it'll give them time to assimilate the information we have and not be thrown in within a week to the town meeting. I was going to propose later on that what we consider is a two-week, or potentially even three-week difference in time between the vote and then the town meeting, which would give us a chance, for example, on the board, to have another meeting if we chose to do so, and introduce the new colleague into what's going on, what to expect, the roles, a lot of things that, I'll be quite frank, I was not aware of when I was elected. I sat there like a doe in the headlights at town meeting, because there were a lot of things I wasn't aware of in terms of participation and the roles of what had been decided by the board, and how the board should be responding to certain things. Anyway, I was going to suggest that maybe we change the date by a week for the vote, but defer the town meeting until the end of June, and that would have been my suggestion.
So I want to say again, for the record, that I still have the same, I still, I want to say that I still have the same concerns for an election effort that has people coming and going, in and out of a building, that right now, we have sealed off to the general public. I'm fine with taking them. I understand the desire is to get the early ballots distributed, and on the basis of that, and that alone, I would be favorable to a motion to establish a date for the election. I would personally recommend pushing it out, as far as we are lawfully able to right now, and I would propose deferring a date for the town meeting, if it's lawful, I'd look to our town administrator for that, to see what information is coming before us from the state.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend a vote for the town meeting that is within the month of June. Once you do get into July, it does trip a lot of additional steps and complications for the town as far as budgeting and working on the next fiscal year's budget within the fiscal year. So I would still recommend, at the latest at this time, an annual, spring annual town meeting of June 29, which technically would make it a summer town meeting, but that's as late as we can go without having additional complications. I realize that the state has provided additional leeway to go into July, but there's a lot of questions still as to what would happen if we did that. Now, having said that, there are aspects of the law that allows the moderator to take certain actions to further delay the meeting in the interest of public safety. So for the purposes of the board setting a date for the town meeting, I still recommend June 29, and certainly, questions about the location and the method of voting, we still have time to address those while still at least setting a date for the town. As far as the town election is concerned, I defer that to the board, as to what you feel is prudent as far as, you know, how close the election is to town meeting. Obviously, at this point, the legislature is only allowing pushing out the annual tunnel until June 30.
All right, I'll make a motion. Lisa, do you have something to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that I do need a date by tomorrow. Tomorrow's really the deadline for me to order the ballots in order to get them in time to promote absentee voting, you know, as wide as possible. People are used to having the election and the town meeting right now a week apart, and so I'm just saying, if you could pick a date after June 1, as late as you feel comfortable with, I'd appreciate that. Also, just to let you know, I am talking to the Board of Health Director, and we are in communication, and he and I are going to figure out a way to have voting in the gym with sufficient social distancing for everyone involved, and we'll have masks and gloves and individual pens, and I, he and I think that it is possible, especially since it's such a large room, and we will have a much smaller turnout than we have, I mean, town elections in general have a very, have a much smaller turnout than any of the other elections, so we are comfortable with being able to handle it in a safe manner.
I would like to ask that the egress be addressed, because if I'm walking in and somebody's walking out of the front door, there's no way that's happening at six feet apart, not a chance.
That's true. We can have them go out the back of the gym. We will address all, any and all concerns that people have.
I would like to know whether or not these dates have, can they be made within one motion, Mr. Gazinsky, or do they have to be two?
I'd recommend they be separate motions, Madam Chair.
I will make a motion that the election for, the upcoming spring election for the town of Millis be held on June 15, so as to set a two-week distance between then and a targeted town meeting.
One second, ma'am.
It's so moved, I'm going to poll the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have a debate on that, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, yep.
A little points I'd like to make, that I think are important to make. The first is that myself and the members of this board, this is for the view of public, we're taking the election date very seriously. I think we all are, both with respect to the public health aspects, with the Board of Health and the town clerk, and if we do a quick review of what towns around us are doing, almost all of them are moving their town meeting to mid to late June and holding elections in June, although I didn't find one that still seems to want to vote for the election in May. They will go unnamed. So it's a serious thing. At the same time, it's serious picture of what is happening here from a governance perspective, is we are extending the term of office holders. That's the result of this, which makes me uncomfortable, maybe uncomfortable when we move the election to June, and I'm weighing that in my own mind as the right thing to do based upon the public health issue. But these are important things and important decisions that we'll make based upon the current situation, and in a sense, setting precedent, God forbid, if the situation were to arise down the road, because this kind of thing's not happened before. So I would propose to be cautious with our votes, and I know we will be, and that the folks in town will be respectful of the fact that we're thoughtful about this and trying to do the right thing. I also think, because this election keeps getting deferred, that doesn't prevent boards and committees, which I think they should do, frankly, from meeting to reorganize themselves in May, because there's no reason that the reorganization of the whole board can occur, given the fact that it's basically enacted by the board or the committee. Now, it's up to each, for each committee, but I think that's something that we should discuss at our next meeting. So I will, you know, I will vote in accordance with these principles, and I think on balance, moving the election is a good thing to do, to preserve the right to vote, as well as to preserve public health. I'm a little concerned with the date of the 15th, because it feels to me, it's still to be too close. But that being said, I would request that I poll last. And I'm just going to be follow the leader, but I want to respect what the board's view is, and I would prefer the 22nd, but I'm willing to support... And I would prefer the 22nd, but I'm willing to support the 15th.
Madam Chair. I respect what my colleague says. I'm not wedded to the 15th. I would like it only because it would be helpful, I think, to some of the people who are elected. But I also understand what my colleague is saying, and I can be flexible in that regard also. It's my preference. And if Mr. McCaffrey feels that we really ought to stick with the more traditional one-week separation, I'm willing to go along with that. My rationale was obviously to give a little more time to those who are elected, but we could certainly discuss that at a future meeting in the summer or later on, if that's something that he feels strongly enough about, and I'm certainly willing to defer to either of you in that regard. I'm not out to set a precedent at this stage that flies in the face of our past history. I absolutely concur in the concept of making the election locale as safe as possible. And I also concur in the idea that to the greatest degree possible, we should try to hold both of these sessions in the June timeframe because of other implications that might take place later on.
So there is a motion on the floor for moving the election to June 15th. I will pull the board. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. Mr. McCaffrey?
I will vote yes.
And I'll make a motion that we, with the best of intent and with the expectation of information to follow, which may change it, that we reschedule the spring annual town meeting, AKA the summer annual town meeting, to June 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to poll the board. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. Both motions passed unanimously, and what I would say to the town is to be cautious and stay tuned because there's every reason to expect that this will, this is a moving target because these are unprecedented times. And Karen, I'm going to stop sharing this screen because I think we're moving on to new things now. Does anybody else have any other questions? No, yes, no? Okay, I'm moving on right now to ask the members of our incredible emergency management response team to provide the community of Milis with their best update as to COVID-19 response by the town. So in whatever order you choose, Chief Barrett or John McVeigh, our Director of Public Health, I'll let you have the floor.
Hi, yeah, this is John, Board of Health. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just as a quick update, these stats are available, as we know, on the state website. Town of Milis currently, from the state's website of April 22nd, the update has 27 positive cases in town. That's cumulative, and I know we've discussed that at some point in time earlier, which I know Kathy Landon is on, online and now that, you know, obviously there's numbers that change as far as who's actually positive at any given time, but as a cumulative number is 27. I think one of the big pushes from the state, even across the country, is for people to wear masks, and we strongly, strongly encourage that outside is to wear a mask. In this information on our website discussing what types of masks and how to make them and try to keep the medical-grade masks in circulation for first responders and medical personnel. So the homemade masks will, in effect, help considerably with keeping people who may be positive and asymptomatic or potentially spreading the disease. So, you know, we encourage people again to wear masks and in public and, you know, take precautions, social distancing, obviously. That goes as I was saying in today's day and age. But that's as far as Board of Health goes, that's as far as the update we have presently. I don't know if Chief, would Chiefs have anything to say on top of that?
I was going to wait and see if Kathy had anything to add to your presentation. Okay, so again, for public safety, as John was saying, you know, the big theme is still act as if everybody that you see has it. Protect yourself, protect your family, social distancing, wear a mask. Again, follow the sites, CDC or DPH, put a 211 to get some information. There's a lot of information out there. And I think if we continue the trend, we can, we can move past this and we'll all come out on the other end much happier.
Are there any other questions on, on the part of either the board to begin and/or members of the community who, or even town department heads who have joined us today? Hearing none, we will continue as a town. Mr. Gazinski, I see your finger. Does that mean you have a question? No.
Sorry, my settings.
I just want to tell the town to be on the record that the Town of Milis does provide current data as best as is available to the state, and then the state reports on the numbers for the town, and that is the practice that will continue. And the town does not intend to participate in online forums of conjecture and rumors. So I think everybody who's listening knows what that means, and I just want to say for the record, so it takes a lot of pressure off of members of our town leadership. Moving right along. Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a final point on that, just from a timing perspective. John, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the state is updating its count by community by the close of business on Wednesday. So weekly, this is being updated with all the detail for all the cities and towns. There's also been some additional information disclosed, not only on location, but from facilities like nursing homes and whatnot. And I don't know, John, whether you want to say a word or two about the fact that that data is also available for people who would like to look for it?
On, on the state, yes, they do break.
Yes, the state.
Down.
Right.
A facility for any positive cases for nursing homes and long-term care facilities. And presently, it would, knock on wood, the places in town, I think there's just one place in town that may be under that category, is doing fine thus far. So we're lucky to that respect, in that respect.
Yes, great, that's great. But I just, again, Madam Chair, the data is there. I just wanted people to know when they can look for the update, and it's every Wednesday now, or in the paper the next morning.
Okay, great. Any other questions? I'm going to move along. We're slipping a little bit in time. Our next agenda item, number 087, is the discussion of the Memorial Day observation with recommendations from our public safety chiefs and director of Board of Health.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
We're great, thank you. Oh, yes, we're great. Thank you for joining us.
In regards to the Memorial Day Parade, from my standpoint, you know, I believe we should postpone or cancel the parade. And I have spoken to our new Veterans Coordinator, and, you know, it's his impression that it would be best as well for our veterans, especially where the virus targets our older folks, our older population, and to unnecessarily have them in that environment. You know, I'd hate to see any of them get sick. And speaking with the Veterans Coordinator, he'd explained he would conduct a service that would be streamed online and on TV to recognize Memorial Day and the importance of the day. But I just don't think it's a good idea to have, have a group together, especially cherished veterans of the community. And I would second Chief Sifai's statements. You know, the governor still hasn't lifted the restrictions. We don't know where we stand. You know, we still have the date of May 4th, but we're unsure of what his recommendations will be. And our belief is to better protect our aging population is to probably postpone the parade, cancel it, work with them to find another time, but also to take the time that day to recognize the solemn day. And I think Chief Sifai's done a good job speaking with the Veterans Agent to move this forward.
Is this something we need to make a motion on? Mr. Gazinski, do we need to?
I believe that the, our safety group is asking, you know, is recommending and asking for the board to make a decision to, at a minimum, postpone the Memorial Day observances and parade until a safer date later in the year.
Do we have a motion from the floor? Are there any other questions, I guess, from the community?
Just a quick comment, if I may. I understand that they're looking at potentially having further ceremonies, parade, whatever, on Labor Day. And to me, that makes a lot more sense, given the knowledge of what we're dealing with at this time and the need for separation. And quite honestly, as has been previously stated, the age of many veterans, much as I hate to consider myself in that category, we are more susceptible, so.
So Mr. Jermaine, as, as the veteran on our board, would you like to make a motion for this?
Well, I certainly will. I move that we postpone the Memorial Day Parade and associated ceremonies that would be held as a group outdoors until a later date, with the understanding that if we can hold a portion of that on some social media meeting, that we would do so.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair, and then I'd like to make a comment.
It's been moved and seconded, I will poll the board.
Madam Chair, could I make a comment first?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that folks would understand that what we're doing is postponing public events. I'm sure there are folks, family members and whatnot, who would want to perhaps, in a private ceremony of some sort or another, visit the cemetery, visit the memorials, and mark the occasion. What we're doing here today is for a public parade, I think, about to ask that folks accept our vote and postpone the parade and public event. I think that's what I'll say.
Right. I'm going to poll the board for this unfortunate situation and resulting in this decision. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
With a thank you for your service, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. And so we have agreed to surrender to the circumstance and postpone our outdoor public events, but we will certainly be reverent, reflective, and we will share and communicate any of the resulting programming that is available and work with our Veterans Department to do that as well as the various organizations. So thank you very much for that. Shifting gears, I want to say that the, the next two presentations are important from both a revenue standpoint as well as an environmental standpoint. I'm going to ask our DPW Director, Jim McKay, and then thereafter, Bob Weiss, to discuss both the update on the recent water testing, water quality testing for wells one and two, and then to introduce a broader discussion about readiness in the event of flooding. Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as an update to the PFAS situation that we're in, I'd like to update that Kirsten Ryan from Kleinfelder has been in touch with Doug Fine, Doug is the Deputy Director of Air and Waste for the Central Regional Office, and Mary Jude Pigsley, she's the Regional Director for the Mass DEP. Myself and the Town Administrator had a conversation with the Director earlier today, and she updated us on what the next step is on this locomotive with no brakes heading down the railroad tracks towards us. She had said that we're going to set up a Zoom meeting on Wednesday that will, and she advised that she would like to have a selectman to be there because there are certain issues that need to be addressed immediately that could bring us into some sort of cost maybe at this town meeting. We don't know what those are yet. We know that most of it is made more towards the landfill itself, not so much at, at the water end. There are issues there, but having the wells one and two offline, that's acceptable for them right at this time. She is suggesting that we now, next step, to go out and retest all our, the wells himself, the distribution wells, the treatment facilities, and that will be discussed on Wednesday. They will pay for that, that testing. Our staff will do it, or if we need to have Kirsten assist us with that, we will do that. And by then, we may have to have a, we may have to ask, we have, you know, the Town Administrator, he will ask if we may have to have a special meeting to move forward with this after, after Wednesday. Mike, is there anything I missed in our conversations?
No, Jim, I think that's pretty accurate. I think they did point out we were technically below the threshold of the parts per trillion, but that it's enough that it's certainly worth and prudent for the town to move forward with a testing regimen. And then we would meet and we'll, like I said, have a phone discussion on Wednesday and figure out where we go from there. So certainly, if one of the board members is available, I believe it's going to be probably late morning on Wednesday to be part of that phone call, that would be helpful. So, and we'll know more after that phone call.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? We're testing the wells. Could you perhaps amplify what we are actually testing for and what are the implications of whatever it is we're testing for toward the health of individuals?
I can't, and I was advised not to do that yet, until after Wednesday. They feel that, to let information out quite yet, where it's not meeting the threshold of the 20. And Betsy, maybe you can help with this also. I think I'm speaking correctly, that they, it's not ready for dissemination through the, through the public. It's more of the landfill itself. The treatment facility right now is keeping it below the level of 20. And in the email that I sent, it gives you the four, the six different criterias that they're actually testing for. So I hope that answers your question. It's not, it's not an answer, but it's just what we're being advised right now until we actually talk to the Director or something.
I'm not questioning that we need to test for something. I think it's important for the community to understand not just what it is we're testing for, but what are the implications of why we're testing and what does this chemical do, if it is chemical? So I'm going to ask it one more time. If we're testing for something, there has to be a reason behind it. What is it we're testing for and what are the implications?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
I believe that the, we're testing for the PFAS, which is a long chemical name that I'll spare everyone of because it's difficult to pronounce.
Six of them.
Pardon?
The six of them.
Yes, but the main, yes. And so those are the main items that are being tested for. Again, we have not crossed formally any thresholds that require by law a public notification to be sent, but because they're finding them in levels that are just slightly below those thresholds, they've advised for a testing regimen. And we can certainly, when we speak with them Wednesday, we can ask for them to provide some additional information about the concerns or any concerns related to PFAS. This is, as we've spoken about before, this is a fairly new substance that's being tested for. And that's probably as technical as I can get, but I will say that we will, we will definitely endeavor to get somewhat detailed information from the DEP and our consultants to be able to provide at your next meeting as to any, what the specific concerns are in regards to these substances.
So, the outcome of this decision then is just to confirm that at least one member from the Select Board will attend this meeting with you, or, I'm sorry, the phone call next Wednesday, Jim?
This Sunday, Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
And it would be, yeah, we're just requesting if a board member is available, that is, that is interested in being on the call, that would be very helpful. If not, we will, we will forward the information on any way to the board, but the official at DEP said it's quite common for a member of the chief elected board to sit in on these types of discussions, always because these types of issues tend to be very sensitive, so.
Anybody of my two colleagues, do you have a preference? Pete, I think you seem to have kind of the deepest drill-down interest. I'm wondering if you want to make, if you're available on that time.
Unless my colleague has a preference to attend, I wouldn't want to deny him the opportunity to.
I cannot attend at that time.
At what time is this meeting?
It's going to be Wednesday. A specific time yet? I hope to have that nailed down by tomorrow.
Yeah, I have a 12 to 1.
Yeah, it could be around that time. I mean, she hasn't got back to us. Let us find out, let the Director get back to us, and we'll send it out to the three of you when we have an exact time.
If I can move it, I will do so if I had to.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I would just like to say, for those who may be listening, the memorandum from the testing company to the town is a public record. It's available to anybody who wants to see it. So, if you would like to see it and some of the, you know, the reporting documentation, it's in the agenda packet, it's available to the public. It is fairly technical, but for those of you who are technical and understand those things, I don't want anyone to think that this is something that we're not, that we're not disclosing. We disclose everything that we have, and all we're saying is that we are still in the process of analyzing, you know, the impact of these, some of these chemicals, some of which I understand from the memo, don't even have health guidelines printed already. So, you know, whether this is just another regulatory hurdle or a more serious issue, we don't know yet. But if you want to know what the results are, just call the Selectman's Office or send us an email, and we'd be more than happy to present to you the documentation that we have, because it is a public record.
Right. Let me reemphasize that my purpose for the questions is to give us all a better understanding of what it is this is all about, the implications to us as a community, to individuals, all of which, none of which we understand really at this time, other than these substances exist, and that's about all we know at this point.
I mean, it's a substance that usually, you'd find them near military bases. You would find it that on old landfills that are capped or non-capped that leave jail. They are, it's a Teflon-type product. That's one of many. And it was found, the Teflon, the type of Teflon that was used back in the 70s and 80s, 90s, and even before, were not good. And that's why they removed most, a good amount of that product from the society in the way it's been used. And it's, right now, it's at our landfill, and that's where the issue is, you know, is going to be, and that's where the further testing will be done.
Okay, any other questions on this? Thank you very much, and we will be reporting back to the town. I'm going to move along to Agenda Item 089, which is a discussion. It has a very fancy name that translates to flooding readiness, but it's actually called the MVP. You'll hear that acronym used a lot. It stands for Municipal Vulnerability Project. And I'm going to ask Bob Weiss, who led a lot of this study in tandem with Jim McKay, to introduce our subject experts, guests from the engineering firm Kleinfelter, Betsy Frederick and Andrew Goldberg, to speak at the 30,000-feet level as to what this project is all about and why they have come to recommend that Melis continue this work.
Betsy, if you want to share your screen. Oh, there's Andrew. Oh, you're great. There you go.
I'll begin. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Bob Weiss of the Energy and Sustainability and Economic Development and Planning Director of the town. This afternoon, we're going to present a proposal regarding the ongoing issue, basically. The town has been dealing with stormwater problems and issues for several years now. Town residents by now are very much aware of the costs of dealing with stormwater runoff. Betsy Frederick, Andrew Goldberg of Kleinfelter Incorporated, who provide stormwater consulting to the town, are helping us to apply for MVP funding from the state to move us on ahead on a major aspect of our stormwater flood control. And I know right now our eyes are really focused on the town's responsibility to pandemic, but we unfortunately have a state-imposed deadline to meet, so it's necessary to present this now. And also, we need to keep our focus on gaining an edge on the not-so-distant future in order to save the town a great deal of money in years to come. So, I'll turn it over to Betsy and to Andrew for our proposal for MVP funding.
Excuse me one minute. Andrew, could you further, can you actually do it as the slide show itself? Yeah, there you go. Then it will take up the whole screen. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here this afternoon to share a little bit about the MVP or flood mitigation project. I'm going to spend a little bit of time presenting to the group what work was completed to help the town become eligible for funding under the current phase. The town completed a planning study in 2018 and 2019, and one of the priorities coming out of that study was flood mitigation and preparation. There is now a funding availability for action grants to take the recommendations from that planning phase and implement them. This is a grant from the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and that grant will pay for 75% of project costs, with the remaining 25% of project costs as an in-kind service, meaning town staff and/or through cash. Wanted to share with you that the study that we're proposing will be looking at locations where the town will be vulnerable to flooding, both now and in the future as climate changes. And we understand that there are efforts going on at the watershed level or the regional level to look at riverine flooding. This project will supplement that effort and also look at the town's drainage infrastructure and the town's community assets, as they're called, so buildings and facilities and infrastructure that's really critical to the types of services that the town provides. So, one of the findings of the planning study was that multiple locations in town are currently susceptible to both riverine flooding from the Charles River and Bogus Talbruk, but also infrastructure or drainage-related flooding, and some of those are marked here. MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, stated in their report that the town's drainage infrastructure that was built decades ago will be inadequate for future flood events and future storms. So, the process that we're recommending is developing a tool that is based on the town's current infrastructure data and current flood risks to figure out where there will be flooding in the future and what can be done about it. We are hoping to include public education and public participation to prioritize which areas in town receive design strategies that will help mitigate flooding. And we're also hoping that this first phase of work will lead to future grant funding exercises through other programs to pay for the final design and the construction costs, which is usually the larger element of drainage solutions in terms of cost. So, in this first phase, which is in blue, we're proposing a significant amount of field work that we hope to participate, which we hope to complete with the town's support in the field, updating information about how the drainage elevation is sloped and how big it is, so that we can figure out how fast and how much water they can convey, and as a result, where there are flood risks in the future. And I wanted to just really quickly show this slide, which outlines how the project fits into what we've heard are high-priority outcomes. So, we're going to be developing a model to look at where there will be flooding in the future and what can be done about it. We're hoping that this will save money by using state funding to offset overall costs and make sure that investments are efficient and that they're being made where they need to be made and achieving downstream benefits for an upstream problem potentially, hoping to get the public involved. What we've heard from you is that the town is looking for solutions to not just water quality issues, but also water quantity or flooding-related issues, and we really think that this will be a good step in the right direction for that. And I just have a couple of really quick slides just to show you potential outputs from this tool. This is an example flood map that shows where the risks are for another community that recently completed this process. You can really easily overlay where the town's buildings and critical infrastructure are to see what might be impacted under various storm scenarios or various climate events. And then you can test strategies.
I'd like to ask a question about this, if I may. Madam Chair, how does this relate to the development of floodplain maps by FEMA?
Sure.
Because, you know, they're active in this as well.
Correct.
It has an impact as they change the floodplain, and it has an impact on homeowners and whatnot, not necessarily actual flooding, but, you know, things around, extra insurance and whatnot. So, how does that relate to what FEMA is up to, as well as, you know, how might this mitigate, well, it's really, how could it change the floodplain? I don't even know what the right question is, but at this point, I think it's really critical for current homeowners as well as development of, you know, parcels that are there that are subject to, you know, potential, not wetlands, I'm talking about flooding issues, risk.
Absolutely. Flooding has very large financial implications, both in terms of insurance and recovery from disasters. And so much of the town's land use is wetlands, which stores water during these kinds of events. So, what I'm showing here is a FEMA map of the 1% or 1 in 100-year storm event, and also the 500-year storm, or the 500-year flood event. What we're basically proposing is to put on top of this map the town's drainage infrastructure to see where there are risks of backing up that drainage infrastructure, because they can't convey the water to all of the rivers and ponds that the town discharges to currently. And then we will be looking at, or the town will be looking at, potential solutions to infiltrate water or get water into the ground before it needs to get into the drainage system and the potential backup, or also to detain water or store it temporarily so that that peak amount of the storm, the high-intensity storm, isn't going into these pipes and backing up and flooding homes. So, it is looking at both the riverine-based and the infrastructure-based flooding, which we anticipate will change over time.
I just add, someone thought on there as well, Mr. McCaffrey, just to, you know, from a planning point of view, something to consider, is that a lot of the FEMA mapping is done through some traditional means and still employs a lot of sort of retrospective-type looking at where these floodplains exist. One of the benefits that we think will accrue to the town through the new model is the opportunity to really project forward through some of the climate change impacts and this scenario is associated with what might happen under those new impacts. So, it has, you know, obviously, the FEMA mapping and what's going on there does inform what the town's planning should be, but the model will provide really additional data than you would normally have from just looking at, for instance, the pre-existing, you know, FEMA maps, or even the maps they create going forward, which still rely on sort of retrospective work at climate impact. So, just offering what that additional value might be, along with what the FEMA mapping all poses, offers the town with respect to planning.
Good. So, just to be respectful and kind of make sure everybody understands, what, the reason that you're here, Kleinfelter experts, is because what you're saying to the town is that when your town is 50% wetlands, you have a higher propensity for undesired events in the event that land structures or specifically culverts, which are known passages with tubes and pipes under places such as rail beds or hills and the like, that if, in fact, for any reason they give way because they are structurally compromised due to a lot of rain, that these, in fact, can cause flooding. And the reason that you're here is because you're recommending that the town authorize a spending package which is essentially a 25% match. So, is that where we're at? Is that, does that kind of simplify it, I think?
That's correct, and it's a timely request as the funding period is expected to start pretty quickly in the summer. The request for applications for the grant opened up last week, and we hope to be able to partner with you as we submit an application.
May I ask a question? It's a 25% match. What do you anticipate will be matching?
The current cost estimate, based on feedback we've received from Jim McKay and Bob Weiss on what should be included, the current project value is about $200,000, with the match being $50,000 through labor or cash. And we've been speaking about potential funding sources as well, and I don't know, Bob, you want to chime in there if there's follow-up questions on initial thoughts?
Well, we have looked at a couple of resources that we would come up with for this matching end. And we, originally, we wanted to go with some state money, but we cannot use other state grants reply to this one, so the money's going to have to come from somewhere in the town. A lot of that is going to be, could be, in kind. So, we have to measure the size of some of the catch basins and who's going to do that, and it takes a couple hours. Can we do that with our own staff time? So, we, Jim McKay and I, and Betsy and Andrew, we'll have to get together, get a little bit more on exactly who can do what, so we know how much of this money we have to come up with in cash and how much we're going to have to come up with in-kind service. I think what we'd like to do is, at this point, I'd like to ask, as we go on, the support of the board, but I guess contingent upon us finding support of the board, but I guess contingent upon us finding a realistic and affordable way to afford this.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions at this point? And I don't want to cut Kleinfelder off, but I am watching the clock because that's my job. So does anybody have any specific questions that you'd like to ask? Maybe Kleinfelder, you might want to point out that you are aware of specific projects that should be addressed and that is part of your urgency in coming forward?
The planning phase identified, I think, a half a dozen locations with existing flood impacts for current climate. And as Betsy alluded to, climate change will only make these types of storms more frequent and more intense. So we want to be able to work with the town to be proactive to mitigate that from happening in the future.
Could I ask our town administrator or director of finance to indicate what you see as a funding source for this? Because we all know the seriousness of today's meeting and the fact that we're going to be having a very tough conversation about fiscal year '21. So we want to make sure that we're being responsible leaders with respect to being asked to authorize spending of up to $50,000.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, I mean, I would say that if we're looking at maybe in-kind services in the $30,000, $35,000 range and then a cash contribution to the project of a $10,000 to $15,000 range, we could work to find funds within the budget to put this together based on the value of this. I think it would be worth the effort to look at that. But I think we, obviously, if it was a full $50,000 cash infusion, that would be very problematic, and we'd have to really take a good look at that. So my recommendation here would be for the board to go ahead and, based on the request from Mr. Weiss, to go ahead and support this with the caveat that we come back to the board with a workable solution to the 25% match as soon as possible.
I guess my question, maybe to Kleinfelder, possibly to Jim McKay, is on the timing. If we don't discuss this for two weeks, is that going to put us behind the eight ball in terms of pursuing this project? And also, another question is if we just scale down the 25% match, can we still get some good work done?
I can quickly answer just the, all you do is voting that we come up with a funding source. It's just a, it doesn't mean that it's going to get approved because if the funding source isn't there, even if we get the grant, if the money, the 25% match is not there, then will we just move on to something else? Or we can't, you know, accept it?
And I can address the other component of that question. There are ways that we can face these projects differently to push costs into FY '22, which would be not the next one, but the following fiscal year, or scale back. But I really do like that suggestion of having a large portion of the project through town participation with existing staff. I think partnering makes a really great way of completing the work, especially the field component where it's inspection of the town's drainage infrastructure that might have to be completed for regulatory reasons anyway.
And I would just point out that the example that Andrew had shown earlier, the city of Medford, having done a similar type of program, I managed that project as well, also through an MVP grant, action grant, and they similarly use a, essentially, city personnel for purposes of simple investigation and some of the GIS data collection as their in-kind match as well. So the type of project, the value of that project, and the mechanics of actually executing on that project under this grant program is something that we can certainly help assist the town, you know, through that process and make this, you know, workable for the community as well as providing, you know, really valuable tools and outcome.
So do we have--
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Two questions I have for Andrew and Betsy. The first, just to clarify, this project is more study. It's not do the projects, it's still trying to figure out what we have to do. Is that right?
I'll certainly let Andrew speak to some of this as well, but the model itself is a product. It's not--
I know, but we're not going to be doing anything with drains in the ground. This is--
There's not a construction, yes, there's not a construction project--
It's a plan for what we got to do.
Correct.
Assuming, and town administrator or the finance director can let me know that, you know, a potential funding source for some of this is certainly the Stormwater Enterprise because this is about stormwater. Now, it's not flushed, but I mean, we may be able to utilize some of the retained earnings in the Stormwater Fund to help support this project.
Madam Chair--
Please.
I was going to ask precisely that, but more important, if we proceed to say, okay, we have no problem with you going to the next step to investigate and get back to us, and then we'll decide if you, how the monies are going to be spent, if we even agree. Are we making any long-term commitments as a result of going forward that commit us, once we begin accepting grant funds, to do something further that we are not anticipating at this time?
No, there is no obligation upon accepting the grant of there being any further action, you know, for instance, ensuring that this gets to a construction phase of any project as a result of the model, for instance. Obviously, the MVP program is geared towards trying to achieve actual projects, you know, shovels in the ground projects, to work towards resilience and adaptation to climate change. So they're seeking opportunity to get to construction-related projects, but there's no obligation to further projects outside of the scope of work that is agreed to under the grant application.
So the scope of work would be then scoped to the budget that is determined to be available, correct?
That is what we were just describing as in terms of scaling this up or down, dependent upon, you know, the ideal scope, which we're talking about as that $200,000. But there, you know, we could look at if the availability of a match is going to have that scope, where might we either modify the scope or look at ways, again, to increase the town's contribution through in-kind labor for different tasks of that scope.
Okay, do we have any other questions? I'd like to bring this to a decision, if I could. Mr. McCaffrey, would you like to make a motion for this?
Madam Chair, I move that the board support the project outlined for Stormwater flood modeling, subject to availability of matching funds.
Mr. Germaine?
Mr. McCaffrey, may I ask a question at this point before we even second it?
Yeah.
And that is that when we say availability of matching funds, that we make sure that we aren't even there in a position that we have, we have in-kind funds as--
Matching funds or labor, yeah, in-kind as well as cash, right?
That's, that's fine. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to proceed with this project with those provisos. I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. The motion is approved, and we look forward to a subsequent report when the forensics for budgeting and the scope of work have been defined. We thank our friends from Kleinfelder very much, and we wish you safekeeping in these very bizarre times.
Very much the same to you all as well. Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Right.
We're a tad bit behind. I'm going to ask Bob Weiss to take the next two agenda items. They are on because they are both focused on economic development. We are offering some initial introductions on the part of two manufacturers that both happen to be in the cannabis sector, and therefore, were we to continue the conversations with them, they would be subject to what is known as a host community agreement, which negotiates a percentage of revenue and/or tax as the agreement is structured in accordance with state law for providing the town as their host venue. So, Mr. Weiss, I'm going to introduce you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have lost my agenda, but I think we're looking first at a proposal for cannabis manufacturing at, what is it, 1375?
Yes. This is Advesa Industries. I'll handle the introduction for you, Bob. Before us and attending this meeting is a consortium of three partners of a company named Advesa Industries. We have Tony Verzura, Jessica Pelletier, and Michael Latulip, no, Latulip, sorry. And so Jessica, I think, is going to take the lead on their behalf to briefly introduce us to what their plans would be if they were to continue the conversations and to identify the location and next steps and the beneficial impact to the town with respect to jobs. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Lauren. I appreciate it. You guys can hear us, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we did submit a PowerPoint. Hopefully, it will get screened in a second.
Yeah, you just have to share your screen?
Yeah, no problem.
There we go.
There you go. And then if you, yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Excellent. So just introduce myself quickly. My name is Jessica Pelletier. Tony Verzura is my business partner and husband. Michael Latulip and I have been business partners the last eight years through my consulting company here in Massachusetts. We are economic empowerment priority applicants as certified by the Cannabis Control Commission, and we have gotten together a great group of individuals, and hopefully, we can find a home in Millis. So I will get started. Advesa Wellness, as I said, is an economic empowerment manufacturing and technology business seeking a host community agreement in zoning approval for our business in the industrial zone of Millis. Our vision is to develop a state-of-the-art manufacturing facility that integrates economic empowerment through employment opportunities, innovative technology, advanced wellness products, and the greater community through education, job skills training, and innovation. Advesa Wellness is a manufacturing technology-based business, and we're seeking approval for our facility in the industrial zone at 1375 Main Street in Millis, Massachusetts. We're a family-owned small business. We're comprised of myself, Tony, and Michael. Between all of us, though, we have 35 years combined industry experience. Tony Verzura, he is a cannabis inventor. He has 20 years of experience with 80, over 80 awards for his plant-based natural products that are solventless, and they utilize mechanical extraction methods. They also, very important too, now that we're talking about the environment, because of our mechanical extraction methods, they don't use chemicals. It has zero environmental impact to both the greater community and the building in which it sits. I myself have been a business consultant. I have eight years, at least, experience providing a variety of consulting services to the industry. I've been, I've done consulting in many different states and many, many different regulatory environments. Michael Latulip is my partner in that company as well. He sits on the CCC Advisory Board for Public Safety, and he also has 10 years' experience in the industry. Our innovative manufacturing functions through B2B services that provides cultivators and retailers cleaner products. So we would be a great addition to Millis because we're actually not competition to any of the existing cannabis businesses. We offer solventless extraction for those other businesses. So if they wanted to use our methods, we can kind of do contract manufacturing. And we also don't do any sort of solvent manufacturing, which is what most of the businesses in Massachusetts currently do. As we mentioned, we are an economic empowerment priority applicant. We were certified because we have demonstrated experience in business practices that promote economic empowerment in communities disproportionately impacted by high amounts of arrest and incarceration. We do have a depth of experience in job skills training for individuals who have been impacted by the war on drugs, and it does present Millis with a unique opportunity to make contributions towards drug war reparation. So as part of our certification with the Cannabis Control Commission, we are mandated to do certain things to improve the program, improve the lives of people who have been disproportionately impacted. And through those kind of rules that we have to follow, we have to offer office hours, we have to offer job skills training, not just for our employees, but for other individuals who are looking to get into the industry. We also have to provide business mentorship classes and a couple other things that I'm sure many of you may be familiar with as well. You could read more about it on this slide as well. So the benefits of manufacturing facilities in towns is one of them is, as we can see over the last couple of weeks, is that cannabis businesses have emerged as a resilient business and essential in times of economic volatility, which is a great and solid economic addition to the town of Millis. Our cannabis manufacturing business model has an extremely low impact on the communities and businesses around it, especially in regards to odor traffic that is associated with retail and cultivation facilities. We also offer, as I mentioned earlier, products that are not currently found in Massachusetts and are in high demand as they don't use solvents. So it's kind of a more organic and healthier product that currently Massachusetts does not have on the market. We also offer job in every skill range, which offers employment to a diverse array of Millis residents. So we, a lot of our jobs are, you know, they don't require college degrees or a doctorates or a master's, and they are kind of for everyone. So we think that's a really great model of employment. In terms of employment, we anticipate 15 to 25 employees initially. 75% will be hired from disproportionately impacted communities as determined by the CCC, and that is one of the requirements that we have to follow because of our designation as economic empowerment. At least 25% of our employees will be local hire from the city of Millis, and we will employ individuals with previous nonviolent marijuana convictions. So we are the right operator for Millis due to a couple of different factors, but mostly our experience, our efficacy, products, influence in our empowerment model. Our manager, in terms of experience, our management team maintains a combined 35 years' experience. Our business model has been tried, tested, and proven to work in comparative markets. And due to our background in manufacturing, we, you know, we know how to operate these facilities and make them profitable and kind of get off the ground running right away. Our products are developed by my husband, Tony Verzura. And as I've said a couple of different times and ways, they are not currently in Massachusetts, and they are in high demand. We have a great following in Massachusetts as well. So we expect to be, you know, off to the races as soon as we get a license. In terms of influence, despite being a small business, our team maintains a recognized influence in the cannabis space through a vast network with other academic institutions, cannabis markets, brand, and our owner's participation in local and global projects. And then through local and international partnerships, our core team has contributed to economic empowerment on a local, national, and international level, and our commitment to this mission will continue through our Millis operations. Right now, the building is the Colt Manufacturing Building. It's at 1375 Main Street in Millis, Massachusetts. Our proposed location makes use of unused space in the existing factory, and it will help generate better revenue for the property and property owners. So the other business that is in the building is called Colt, and they manufacture brass fasteners for the military. It's also owned by the building owner, so there's no conflict with the businesses that are currently there right now. It's not near residential areas. It has adequate parking. It maintains visibility, which is great for security reasons. They're secure entering and exiting. They're secure entering and exiting, and there's secure deliveries when utilizing the loading dock. And then another very important thing regarding the environment is because we are zero waste and we use mechanical extraction methods, we do not emit odor into the air within the interior or exterior facility. And then I'm going to let Tony talk a little bit more about our products.
So, that was really good.
Thanks.
So, just real quick.
Trying to fit into 10 minutes.
Yeah, just real quick on our products. When she's talking about mechanical, I developed different types of technology equipment as well as a process that is all mechanical. No water, no CO2, no ethanol, and no chemical extraction process, which means the byproduct, after you extract the product, does not get thrown away. It also doesn't create in and out of different types of solvents that will cause environmental impacts. We don't have any extra water or extra sewer or waste or anything like that that would impact your community. And ultimately, all the products are 100% plant-based, vegan, do not have any kind of artificial flavoring or artificial synthetic additives, fillers, or cuts or anything like that. I'm known for making my own line of base wellness capsules, sublinguals, topicals, as well as another brand called Blue River, which, combined, we've done a lot of really good impact with this type of innovation and technology. So, these are the types of products that you don't see in Massachusetts. They're still dealing with ethanol or CO2 and ethanol and/or chemical solvent extractions.
Now, to what everybody is most focused on is the host community agreement. So, I know that you've opted for a 3% local sales tax. In some cities, there's also a community impact fee that's no greater than 3% of the total gross sales. And us, in conjunction with the city manager, will be able to negotiate any other benefits or further restrictions on the business that will benefit the public. We also must abide by the state-mandated economic empowerment requirements, which include contributions to the community in the form of education, job skills support, as discussed earlier. We also are open to aiding in other initiatives that meet the town's immediate needs as well, which we have heard a few on the call today. So, the proposed timeline, very quickly. Right now, we're asking for the support of this selectman and mayor for an HCA negotiations commence. If that is granted, then the HCA approval and negotiations hopefully wouldn't take too long. And we can submit our state application shortly after, hopefully, in a good environment that would be June 2020. To be conservative, we'd like to receive a provisional license from the CCC as soon as possible. But conservatively, we can call that December 2020. Final licensing from the CCC, conservatively, March 2021. And hopefully, we can open a year from today. Now, those are all conservative numbers. Being an economic empowerment applicant, we actually do have priority at the state level. So, as soon as we do submit, we actually do get to cut a lot of the lines of the general advocates, which will bring us into operations a lot sooner than many of the other general applicants as well. And then the state licensing is pretty straightforward. As I said, we can just submit the license, and then we'll have to wait and see where we are in the queue. But we should be able to kind of skip a line. So, if you guys have any questions for me, just feel free to ask. If not, or if you think of any, I know Lauren has my contact information. Just feel free to email or call.
So, thank you very much. We do have another company right behind you, but I'm going to bifurcate the two because they're different companies and different proposals before the town. And so, first, I'm going to ask my board colleagues and the town administrator to offer any comments or questions. And I do have some requests from the attendees.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. McCaffrey. Jim, did you have something you want to say?
No, go ahead. I'll ask after you because I met with these folks myself.
Oh, okay. I'd like a clarification on the economic empowerment. It sounded like you take, use residents for approximately 25% of the positions. Where are you getting the other employees? What does economic empowerment really mean?
So, that's a minimum of 25% from the town. We met with Jim, and, you know, if we can't find, you know, a minimum or there may be more, it's, you know, it's subject to change. But that's, you know, at a minimum. And the economic empowerment program, we get many of the employees from areas of disproportionate impact, and that's determined by the Cannabis Control Commission.
So, what does that mean, disproportionate impact?
So, areas of disproportionate impact are areas that were determined to have been impacted more by the war on drugs due to increased policing, stop and frisk, and just a variety of other factors that contributed to mass incarceration. And those areas are determined by the CCC. Some of them include, you know, Boston, Roxbury, Worcester. There's a very long list, and you can find it online.
And would you be employing people who have previously been incarcerated?
Yes, for a nonviolent marijuana conviction so they cannot have a gun charge or, you know, some other sort of illicit substance on their record.
And are you going to be selling anything in our town?
No, we are a manufacturing business only. So, we're the intermediate between cultivation and retail.
With product ties from cultivation to retail. And do you have references for any previous business work that you've been in?
Yes, yeah.
And you'll provide those to us?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, if you, just say a word or two about, you sort of glossed over your experience, which in our meeting, you were clear that this is an organization between the two of you and whoever else has done a lot of its work and done in various parts from the country. And two things I'd like you to address. One is, how did you land here? I don't mean, you know.
It's a long story.
Select, no, it's select site, I mean. Tell us a little bit about the advantages of the site itself from your point of view, both with respect to the building and the collaboration with the building owner.
Okay, so do you want us to speak in regards to our business experience as well?
Yes, just give us the highlights because we're trying to get a sense here. Because I think what's being asked really is whether or not the board would support the initiation of a negotiation over a host community agreement. It's not, and only if an HCA is adopt, is approved, is agreed to, would we go forward from there, or would you go home?
Yes, of course. So, for me personally, I actually got into the cannabis industry in 2012. So, I started a consulting company. I majored in economics of the drug war and politics and governance. So, I started my consulting company. I worked for a variety of publicly traded and privately-held companies doing mergers and acquisitions, standard operating procedures, business development, product ideas. And through my work, I actually met Tony. He's also in the marijuana industry for quite some time. And we started the company that we are talking about today, Advesa. He can talk a little bit more about his experience. But I have kind of been a jack-of-all-trades in the consulting world, and I kind of done everything across the board, from cultivation designs, manufacturing designs, yeah, the standard operating procedures. And I've helped retail operators get their licenses here in Massachusetts and elsewhere. And how, why are we here? I've been, my consulting company has been in Massachusetts since I've started. We work primarily out of Massachusetts and had offices here in regards to Millis as a great place for manufacturing. As you know, it's very difficult for businesses to find buildings because for marijuana companies, they have to be owned outright. If a bank or, you know, mortgage lender finds out that you have a marijuana business, they will, they will not do business with you. So, you have to find a building that is owned outright, which is what brought us to the Colt Manufacturing Facility and leased to sellers. Why do we think it's a great building? It's visible from the road. It has separate entrances and exits. It's not near a residential community. It's within zoning compliance to the other marijuana facilities that are in town. And we do think that it is a great addition to the town. The parking is also a very important piece as well. Yeah, and then Tony can talk about the infrastructure.
So, my background started in, I guess, Colorado in 2009. I was first a caregiver, started on the medical side, and ultimately went from about, from the cultivation side. I was vertically integrated. So, we went from about three lights to 300 lights along with greenhouses. I've had extensive experience from cultivating and being vertically integrated. We had several retail operations. I then left that when it went to adult use. Believe it or not, I was kind of against that. And went public, created the first set of cannabis patents for the methods of use, which is essentially identifying in the cannabis plant the 31 different types of claims that can interact with the receptor system that's in the human body. I was granted those, went through the public sector. Then I started my flagship project, which was taking that, those patents and developing technology around them, focused on mechanical isolations and preserving these different compounds found in cannabis. Most people talk about THC or CBD, but there's hundreds of them. And so, there's an undiscovered amount of benefits that is in the plant from a non-psychoactive response. And so, that I developed, planted a flagship technology companies and launched two companies. One was Blue River, and one was Advesa. And in that process, like we talked about, had won about 80 different cannabis awards through Advesa. We have about 62 of them. And was, 2008 voted like most influential, 2018 on a list of people that are in our industry that get respected for different types of accomplishments. And so, I was somebody that was on all types of extraction. Did ethanol extraction, did CO2 extracted, did hydrocarbon extraction. And ultimately, I did not want to create a product that did not meet a long list of certifications and wanted to bring it to the nth degree. And so, this technology allows us to create products without heavy metals of any kind, microtoxins, microbes, and pesticides, as well as residual solvents. And so, in that process, started to develop these different types of products. And combined, when I met Jessica, she was my better, the other half, my better half, where I was kind of the mad scientist, and she was.
And I bring it to market.
She brings it to market and created all the standard operating procedures so that we can license this technology out. And in some of those other states, we are in about 170 locations. But in some of those other states.
But we are, just to clarify too. So, we are a small business, as we did speak about Jim. So, we are, we lease out our technology, and we are in a lot of stores. But that by no means means that we're millionaires or, you know, it's raining money on our doorstep, although I really wish at this point, especially after the last couple weeks. But, yeah, so we are in other markets, and our technologies in other markets. But at the end of the day, our business is comprised of, you know, Tony, myself, his brother, and a couple other people.
And we moved, I moved to Massachusetts about two years ago. We got married, settled down, and ultimately wanted to create a flagship facility. I like the building because of the infrastructure, the ownership, the vast amount of power that's there, and having a low impact, starting off with, you know, the building has about 300,000 square feet. We would like to start off with about 5,000 square feet. Start off small, create this flagship, create a really nice facility that can accomplish both of our goals and ultimately really have a lot of potential for the future in Millis. Thank you.
I know, does anybody else, I know that, Mr. Nichols, I'd like to recognize you. You have a question for this company. And I do want to say for the record that we are 55, 0 minutes off target. So, Mr. Nichols?
How you doing, Richard Nichols? I'm the chairman of the planning board. I did have a question on the co-use of the building. Is that within CCC guidelines?
So, it is within the CCC guidelines. The only thing that I can see, you know, being an issue is your Section 4 of your bylaws in Millis. It prohibits establishments inside other buildings. But it also provides a waiver process if we can demonstrate adequate security measures to prevent diversion to minors or otherwise want to be prohibited. So, I think that the only question is the city and town bylaws and not the CCC, but it is CCC zoning compliant.
Okay, so you just have to meet our bylaws. So, knowing that if, you know, if anything does proceed, that would be one thing that we would be looking for.
Yes, the waiver process.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Are there any other participants in this call? Many of you whose names, I apologize, I'm not familiar with. So, it's, we're great, we're glad to have you on board. Does anybody else have a question that they would like to ask? I'm just going to let you unmute.
Lauren, can I, can I ask a question?
Please.
Kathleen Landon, Millis Board of Health. So, my understanding that cultivation, processing, and packaging will occur at this site, all three functions?
No.
So, what, what will actually occur?
Just, just production slash manufacturing and possibly packaging.
So, the product will be brought to the site?
Yes, so how our business works is that the cultivator brings their raw material or the raw cannabis to our product, and then we process it into cannabis-containing products, you know, not joints or smokeables, but capsules, sublinguals, topicals, and, you know, products of those sorts.
And then they get, then they get distributed to retail.
And then they get distributed to the retail, through a distributor.
So, do, so you do do packaging as well?
We, we may do packaging. It depends on, on the contract that the cultivator or retailer's want, and it just depends.
Generally, we do offer that service.
Yeah, but generally, we do offer that service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Bob Weiss, Economic Development Director. Tony, you and I have gone back and forth all weekend without much success. But you had 170 locations. Is this physical locations or this is, these are places that are selling your product?
Places that are selling our products.
Yes.
You're selling your product. So, your products are being sold out of 170 different locations around the country?
Correct.
Okay, and this is going to be the flagship?
Correct.
Basically, you're taking the commodity, and you're going to be manufacturing products out of this commodity?
Correct.
So, I would like to, is there any other questions from the floor? Mr. Kaczynski, do you want to provide any structural comments for this? Because we also have another business in the same sector wanting to do a different approach. And I believe what has been asked of the board is whether or not to continue conversations on an HCA, correct? Yes, correct?
There, so the board at this point can make a determination on whether you'd like to move forward, whether you would not like to move forward, or whether you would like additional information before moving forward. So, those are the three items before you. It's really up to the comfort level of the board, based on the information you've received, whether or not you want to instruct representatives of the board to enter into HCA discussions for this proposal.
I'm going to speak singularly for myself in that we just spent an hour discussing this company. And I think what it indicates is that there is a high level of public interest in it. And I think that there are enough questions to be answered that I think there's probably nothing to be lost by allowing some more time to elapse so that we can, through the town administrator, invite the community and also compile a list of our own questions and then have a follow-up conversation with them when they're a little bit further along in some of their due diligence with the town and review of bylaws and things like that. For me, I feel like it's a little premature to, to go forward with an HCA conversation. My other colleagues may feel differently.
Well, Madam Chair, that's just, it's up to the board, to the comfort level of the board,[1772.58] the board, based on the presentation and, and uh the feelings of the board at this time. So um, we are standing by to move forward with whatever direction the board would like to take on it.
Um, Mr. McCaffrey, do you have anything to add, or Mr. Jermaine?
Well, Madam Chair, I will go next. I mean, from my perspective, I think the process um has to get, uh, let's call it more texture to it, more reality to it. I think that the framework of a H C A negotiation brings that to the table. Uh, we're not gonna be voting to enter into an H C A, we'd be voting into uh to go into negotiation with the business to determine the economics of the, of the situation. And um, this is certainly a format that we've used before. Town Council already been advised uh that this may be coming down the pike. So I think the vehicle for moving forward is actually to enter into the negotiation, which is no commitment, it's just a negotiation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot more I'd like to understand about it. I mean, for example, the city of Somerville turned them down due to, as they said, la- um, lot ties to the community and the application indicated a weak E E A connection. So there are a number of, and that's just one, that was my quick perusal of where they're at. I'd like to understand if they've been turned down elsewhere, what the issues were, and how we want to look at them for the future. So in terms of proceeding for future discussion, as my colleague said, I don't have any problem with continuing to discuss it, but I certainly have a lot more questions to ask.
Well, Madam Chair, if the process the board wants to follow is to enter into an additional fact finding before going into the negotiation, I mean, I can support that. I just think that uh the business has made a proposal, um and it's incumbent upon us to move forward with the process. Um, and we all know that this is a difficult time to, to begin with. So if we don't have sort of a plan, then things will get sidetracked. Uh, it's an important offer, you know, for us to consider, certainly in the context of um economic development. Um, so I, I, I would prefer to use the H C A negotiation as the framework, but I can certainly support, um, you know, if it's, let's gather our questions and ask some more questions, that's fine, I just don't want to see it disappear. I think we need to have the discipline to, to, you know, to move forward with these kinds of proposals.
I, I have no problem with that. If we can, we can put within the framework of reviewing the H C A and how we're gonna proceed and including that, what's been done and some background on them, I have no problem with moving forward in that regard.
If you guys wanna, one of you wants to make a motion, I'm fine with it.
Well, then I would make the motion that the board uh authorized the town administrator, town council, to enter into a negotiation with the company to create a post-community agreement while asking the board members to provide in advance the areas that they would like to see addressed, which fall outside of the H C A we've already developed. It's a long-winded memo, but I'd like to have the input from the board so that can be incorporated into the negotiation.
Okay, I'll second that in terms of understanding more of their background and where else they've applied and had problems and why.
And um it would be important, I think, for our um economic development and planner to be very much probably quarterbacking this, correct?
Madam Chair, I would agree with that. I mean, critical uh economic development component, and wants to have, I don't wanna call up the referee, but-
All right, I'm gonna poll the board, uh it's so moved, I'm gonna poll the board to vote. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Barnes, yes, uh given the conditions. So we thank you very much. We thank everybody for their patience. We have had a significant time slippage, I'm gonna thank our presenters. And uh with fingers crossed, I'm going to ask our friends from G T E Millis L L C, which is a subsidiary of a larger company, Green Technologies, um to be, to be who-
Madam Chair, just before we close this up, I'd like to go back to the applicant. I mean, is this a reasonable result from your perspective, or is it something that, you know, frankly, you're not hearing the support you want, so you might move on?
No, I think that this is a great start. I think these are all very good questions and, you know, I could uh answer right now, but I know that we're pressed for time, um but I, the answer is not going to be what you think it is. Um, and Somerville is actually a retail application with four other economic empowerment applicants. Um, so Somerville actually cannot make that distinction and they went against state li- guidelines in doing so. They actually didn't even choose any economic empowerment applicants, um so they're-
I'm gonna, can I just interrupt? I really want to keep us on task here. And what I would like to do is I would like to, we clearly want to do a public process, what I'd like to do is ask that in the context of a list of questions-
Yes.
And then we can come back. I just wanted to hear-
We're very patient of it. In short, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your understanding. Uh, we have another group uh from the same sector with a very different approach, a different location, and uh I'm gonna uh introduce uh Jemmen Patel, um and actually, actually do so through Bob Weiss again. Thank you. Did we lose Bob Weiss?
Sorry, I was, I was just talking to myself, sorry. Uh, G T is uh looking at uh another property out on Main Street, uh fourteen eighty Main Street. And I think today we have, I'm not sure if we have uh Jemmen Patel, but we certainly with uh Charag Patel, we are on, on there. So I will uh turn this over to you, uh-
Introduction for the uh presentation?
Yep, that's not a problem. Uh, just to quickly address a few things, uh we actually plan on having a few colleagues with us today. Uh, Jemmen and Matt Hoffman are, will both be unavailable today. Uh, they had uh two different emergency leaves, but uh no, just happened to be at the same time. Uh, but I will start off to show um the slideshow as soon as I can screen in here. All right.
There you go.
Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so uh, just to get started with the presentation, good evening, board members. My name is Charag Patel, I'm the president of uh Green Tech Enterprises. Uh, I want to quickly introduce the team on the call here today. Uh, we do have Jim Smith and Sierra Grant from Smith Costle and Crawford, uh and Andy Wilder, our security advisor for Centronics. We want to begin the presentation by offering condolence and best wishes to those who have been impacted by COVID nineteen, and also want to thank healthcare and essential workers out there who continue to provide their services to make our lives easier. We appreciate the accommodations that the town made for us to present in front of you today. So today we have a proposal for G T Millis L L C is proposing a cultivation site at fourteen eighty Main Street, Millis. G T Millis L L C is subsidiary of Green Tech Enterprises, Inc. I'll be referring to our company as G T E for the rest of the presentation. G T is a minority-owned business, which was established in two thousand eighteen by local Massachusetts residents. All the investing members and management team have extensive experience in the package stores, convenience stores, franchise businesses, gas stations and hospitality businesses. These are all regulated industries that are, that require full compliance with local and state regulations similar to the cannabis industry. Our subsidiary companies own three, own three other marijuana establishments that are in various stages of local and state approval. G T is dedicated to cultivating and manufacturing consistent, high-quality, lab-tested cannabis products. The site is located at fourteen eighty Main Street in the industrial zone in Millis, across from Millis' collision center, behind Ned's Fish Factory, if that's familiar with everybody. The site complies with zoning bylaws of the town of Millis by being located in the appropriate zone. The proposed location is at least five hundred feet or more away from the closest residential property. The site, the site will be a wrecking a brand-new building to be an approximate size of six- sixty thousand square feet. The site will have adequate parking spaces and up to a hundred for its staff and personnel. The property will be fenced off and have no signage that can be viewed from the street. So there will be essentially no visual exposure from the exterior of the building. During these uncertain times of economic disruption due to COVID nineteen, cannabis manufacturing continues to be growing industry in Massachusetts. Manufacturing provides the employment and financial benefits of the town without traffic, noise, odor and public nuisance. The company's presence in Millis will have a low impact on the town's resources since our factory or facility will not have the traffic that is associated with dispensaries that you see. The first and foremost uh important uh benefit to the town of Millis will be jobs. G T will create up to seventy-five jobs here in Millis and the company will give preference to local Millis residents. There will be a combination of full and part-time jobs that offer low liv- low wages. G T will also offer health insurance and other benefits to employees. In addition to jobs, G T will be generating monetary benefits for the town itself through three major avenues. The first one is a community impact fee on any sales generated in the company. The second is real estate property taxes, and the third is the, any ancillary fees from permitting and inspections. G T will be investing approximately fifteen million dollars in the town of Millis with this project. Project development will bring many construction opportunities for local contractors and subcontractors. During the construction phase, G T will give priority to local contractors provided that they have adequate experience for the required services. G T plans to actively participate in town's future council to provide our expertise and experience when needed. Our company will have a strong presence in the community. The company will provide resources to organizations that provide programs for prevention of underage usage and substance abuse. Will not only be a company in Millis, but a partner to the community to help organizations that are dedicated to providing these necessary educational services. G T will provide job skills training for individuals incarcerated by war on drugs. The company will work with and financially contribute to Massachusetts organizations to help those individuals who have been convicted on small marijuana charges expunge that off the records so that they can find meaning, meaningful em- employment in the industry. All applicants will be thoroughly vetted by the C C C when they register to be an agent at our company. We are dedicated to providing a positive impact in the communities as our business operates with one goal in mind, its commitment to education and sustainable operations by utilizing energy-efficient systems. The proposed facility, we have state-of-the-art uh security features. To highlight some of the features, uh we're gonna have twenty-four-seven video monitor surveillance, which covers both interior and the exterior of the building. There will be R F I D access checkpoints throughout the entire building. Facility will also have a secured vault that will store any and all products and resources. All staff and personnel will have photo identifications on them at all times, including visitors. A full copy of our security layout and policies and procedures will be provided to the local police department and fire department for reference, for feature reference. The odor control, um, G T will have an odor control plan that will meet or exceed the requirement of uh the three ten C, uh C M R, which is the air pollution control in the C C C guidelines, uh guidelines document. The plan is to mitigate the odor in and around the building to either eliminate or reduce it to the lowest level possible. This will be done through various techniques such as recirculation of the air, discharge through carbon filtration. A full plan of this plan will be submitted with the special permit application for town's review. It's a good, it, it is also good to know that G T will have state-of-the-art energy-efficient systems to have minimal environmental impacts and adherence of the new and updated C C C The timeline of this project, um, I didn't necessarily break it down into months because uh it's kind of hard to gauge the timeline of the exact project, but uh in the, the completion date uh is set to be either the mid or the end of two thousand twenty-one. And in the year of two thousand twenty, we plan on doing the following, which is to negotiate the post-community agreement, then after holding, uh hold a community outreach meeting for our butters and the public, meet with the police and fire chief to go over our security plan, file a state application for a tier-five cultivation and manufacturing license, file a special permit with the planning board, receive a provisional license from the C C C, and then pull any building requirements, uh pull, pull any required building permits uh from, from the town of Millis. And then the following year, we plan to begin construction and then soon after commence And lastly, we wanted to give you a quick introduction to team members. Um, we have myself, which is um, I'm the C E O, the chief executive officer of the company. We also have Matthew Hoffman, he's unable to join us today, he's a chief scientific officer. And uh Andy Wilder, he's a security advisor, uh he's, who's also on the call with us today. Uh, apart from these three, we also have three law firms that represent us. Uh, we have Smith Costle and Crawford, uh out of Boston, uh Burns Levinson, also out of Boston, and Vera out of Easton for legal services. Uh, with that said, I'd uh like to take any comments and questions from the board and anybody who's watching us today. Thank you for the presentation.
Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues to ask any questions or make any comments. Mr. Jermaine, you look unmuted, so feel free.
I'm unmuted, all right. Um, I really don't know much about you and as a result, I'd say if we're going to continue, it'd be much along the lines of what we discussed with our previous uh company that came in, just to get more information about your background, if you've had um other companies you've worked with, uh the locations you've worked in, whatever. Um, but overall, I have no problem with the basics, although I have to tell you, your name that you're using surprised me. I'm, G T E to me is a slightly different company and a little bit larger than what you are at this day.
Now, of course, um, and uh if, if you guys want, I can quickly go over some of uh, some of our background and um some of our company experiences, uh but if not, we can always save it for a later time. Um, but yes, uh G T just stands for our company. I mean, if it happens to be somebody, or similar to somebody else, some other else's company, uh, I apologize, I didn't know that.
Well, we, uh, we certainly had our, uh, one of our new businesses in town, the, the Cleco Coffee Shop, we're under a little branding problem apparently.
Yeah.
With the word Cleco in Paris, so you better make sure that you're, you're okay. I, I'd like to ask you if you could just briefly describe for us, you mentioned the site, you mentioned the size of the building, is there any more information that you can share with us and the public as to the nature of this building? Because it's a pretty big building, sixty thousand, pretty, it's a pretty big building. So anything you can do to just quickly sort of scope it out-
Sure.
-to understand what the building would be like.
Sure. So uh, the six thousand square feet is gonna be a steel building, uh it's gonna be the typical warehouse building that you typically see in the industrial zone. Uh, forty thousand square feet of that space on the interior is gonna be outfitted uh for our cultivation uh and manufacturing side of things. So uh, if you can imagine the uh six thousand square foot space, twenty thousand will be allocated towards our offices and our personnel and staff, and then the forty thousand square feet will be the, uh, the approximate size of where we'll have our grow room, our bedrooms, our manufacturing equipment, um, all within that vicinity. And uh, outside of that scope, uh, the uh site itself is actually fairly large. Uh, I believe we have uh around eighteen acres or so, uh but I believe half of that is only uh usable uplands. Um, and if things progress in a pretty positive direction, uh we actually have much brighter and bigger plans uh to expand, uh but you know, I didn't want to kind of touch on those because I didn't want to make expectations that were surreal. But uh eventually, we did want to implement uh greenhouses in there as well, uh which would be uh, you know, very unique in the sense that there's not too many greenhouses available here in Massachusetts, so they'll be specifically designed uh to be operational here uh in this state, uh as well as solar field, um, solar field panels, uh to be able to create our own electricity, uh so we can uh, you know, the only, using twenty percent or, or twenty percent or less power from the, uh, from the grid and uh be using eighty percent of rate of our own. Um, so that's really the uh overscope of the entire site, um as opposed to the logistics. We haven't really drawn out any uh site plans or anything related to the property as of right now, uh which we plan on doing uh as we progress.
You also mentioned that you're a vertically-integrated company, so tell us a little bit about the other components.
Sure.
That you can be located.
Of course, uh, so we are vertically-integrated, um, which, which means that we do, uh, we do the whole, the, the whole nine yards from cultivation to manufacturing, from packaging, distribution, and then we end up in our retail. Uh, so when I did mention that we did have three other locations, uh those were our retail locations in other towns and cities. Uh, so this site here will function as our uh cultivation and manufacturing site where we would grow, cultivate the product, and then manufacture, uh similar to the, um, similar to the previous applicant, uh where we'll be having mechanical, um, mechanical equipment to extract our own items and create our own product. Uh, the only thing we would not be doing, or we probably haven't considered yet, is uh making our own edibles, uh which, uh which requires to have a kitchen, so we're gonna be kind of staying away from that. But eventually, then those products will lead into packaging and then distribution into our retail stores and other retailers should we get contracts.
So you'll be a no wholesaler to not only your own stores, but to stores potentially?
Potentially, yes.
And you do understand that the zoning bylaw limits the number of retail outlets in Millis to one?
Correct. Uh, so when I say vertically-integrated, we do not plan on vertically-integrated at this site in Millis, we only strictly-
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Right, so just strictly doing cultivation and manufacturing, that's it.
Okay, fine. So those are the businesses you're looking to move forward with?
Correct, right, and then to-
The major difference for us is that the other applicants, um, that we've considered, well except for the retail store with the, that involved building a new building, posing the bill with significantly large building in Millis, in the industrial zone.
Yes, um, and frankly, uh, we are at, um, as an entity, only limited to three retail locations uh in the state of Massachusetts, so um, you know, we actually had opportunities to seek that at an earlier stage in time, and uh we hope, um, more or less by the end of this uh summer here, we should be secured all those three locations. And we hope more or less by the end of this summer here, we should be secured all those three locations in other towns and cities. So this site will function only as cultivation.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sherrod, this is Lauren Barnes, the chair of the select board. I'm wondering if you could just speak briefly to your plans with respect to sewer versus water. I presume you're familiar with the fact that we are currently at capacity for sewer.
Sure. So I've had this conversation with Jimmy, he actually brought that to my attention since you and him had the initial conversation. But for water usage, we don't necessarily have an exact usage. And I wish Matt Hoffman was on the phone today because he'd be able to answer the exact usage for that. But for the sewer, depending on how this project progresses, we cannot mind at all implementing septic systems into our own site. Because the way that things work, there's a lot of intake of water or a lot of intake of fluids, but there will be less than 10% of that actually going towards the waste. So in the event that we do have to kind of plan to provide our own septic, we should be able to do that. And you know, we have other implementations to be energy efficient inside our own facility. So there will be at least, the minimum waste kind of going out of this facility, we're going to be implementing reverse osmosis, try and reintroduce the water that we've already used and back into the plants. So overall, we don't anticipate too much waste, but if we ever come to a time where we need to install a septic, we'll be able to provide that, no problem.
Are there any other questions from the people who have been participating? Anybody?
I do have a couple, Ben, sure. Okay, who's going to own the new building? Would that be you?
Yes. So thanks to our attorneys and Burns Levinson, our structure is made to be the way it is. But everything is under our umbrella. So the original owner, like myself and the investors and the management team behind us, are broken down to two separate entities, which is one that strictly focuses on operations, the other one that owns the properties. But yes, everything will be owned and retained by us. So just under a different entity and you'll be able to recognize that because it'll have something similar to what we have now as GTE and it'll be GT Milis Realty. But yes, everything will be owned and provided by us.
Okay, now we just heard in the previous presentation that if there's a mortgage on a building, there's a lot of trouble with financing beyond that. Do you have any comment about that?
Sure. We have ran into a lot of, you know, roadblocks for that, but necessarily for us. But we are all self-funded for all these projects. And even if there was any sort of funding required for future sakes, we do have some great contacts with some banks that are already working with this industry and that are providing loans, like there's small community banks. But yes, you are right. I mean, if there's, let's put it this way, if we never owned the property and we were trying to lease a space and they had a mortgage on the property, that would be an issue. But if we own our own property and if we were to get financing of some sort, whether it's through a third party or even a bank, as long as they're okay with it, you know, it shouldn't be an issue.
And one question, if I may, on the securities, like your security persons here. That's a 24-hour security. Would that mean, obviously you're going to have cameras all over the place and I don't think you have a 24-hour operation unless you are planning for such. So do you have somebody who's always watching these cameras? Or do you have an alarm system that will, that somebody is on call for?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, so the whole story we have 24/7 surveillance is that it's actually in the CCC guidance is that we have to have up to 90 days of tracking for all the footage. And yes, there is a third-party company that is monitoring our facility as well. And in addition to that monitoring company, there's two other accesses that are given out once control can be commissioned. They can actually view and log into our backlogs at any given time for any incidents or even just investigation. And the third would be if the local police department did ever need access, we'll be providing them access as well. So that way they can, you know, if there's any incident reporting, they can use it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think as with the prior presenter, there's probably a lot more questions that the board and the community would have to ask. For the public venue is the fact that you come from a category of great public interest and one that is guided by state legislation and requirements for negotiating a host community agreement. And I would like to ask my colleagues if they would like to take a similar informed action with respect to negotiating a host community agreement, mindful that there are a lot of questions to come and that we do want this process to be a public one where people can ask questions and receive good information and response.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator, town council, and the negotiating team to enter into a negotiation with GTE to develop a host community agreement subject to be presented back to the board for discussion and approval.
If I may add similarly to what we said before, which is a little more background and more information about the company and their past history and so on. At any rate, I would second that.
So moved. We'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. And we want to thank the company and its sundry supporters who've been part of this call for making it through this first leg of the conversation with the community of Milis. And I want to thank in particular Bob Weiss, who will be quarterbacking this effort on a parallel track as our director of economic development and planning. And I will say also, Sherrod, also he's our energy and sustainability officer. So you have in him an expert resource who is a twofer where it comes down to solar conversations.
No, that's great. Thank you. Thank you everybody.
Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you. And we definitely appreciate the no surprises clause to this agreement. So we look forward to hearing more information directly. And we thank you very much for your patience with the clock and your time in sharing this down.
Yes, no, thank you for the opportunity for presenting for us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, have a great night.
Thanks.
I am now going to move along again to Mr. Weiss. Economic development is naturally very busy right now. And we take this piece of our town leadership extremely seriously. We understand that we are in very tough times and the economic development committee has a lot of ideas in the pipeline. And I'd like to introduce Bob Weiss, as well as attorney Nicole Riley to speak to those. Thank you. Bob, you have to unmute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Nicole Riley, I think does not need any introduction other than this they right now. She is also the chair, some people may not know, she is the vice chair of the economic committee in the town of Milis, the economic development committee. In the committee's role to advise and recommend to the board, she is coming to you this afternoon with a proposal for a private sector initiative, task force, if you will, that would help reopen Milis's economy for its many small businesses once we get through with this part of the pandemic situation in town. So Nicole, I will, over to you.
Thank you, Bob. I apologize. I am not, I'm new with this whole Zoom thing. And I can't figure out how to get the slide up without it showing the whole.
Oh.
Go to slideshow, go to slideshow at the top. Slideshow on the top bar. Center. You're assuming I can find any of that.
No, no, you just cut yourself off. Go to slideshow on the top of your PowerPoint.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all lost now. Oh, I just.
Wouldn't worry about it. Go back to the shares.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there you are.
There you go. Open up your slide. There you go.
And then in PowerPoint, Nicole, you'll see right in the middle below the red bar it says slideshow.
Go to the right. All right.
Yep.
Keep going. There you go.
I apologize.
There you go.
No worries. We're all learning.
There we go. All right. Thank you. Sorry for having to be spoon-fed this whole process. Well, thank you for giving the economic development committee the opportunity to meet with the board this afternoon. As you're all aware, the government's response to the current pandemic has forced innumerable businesses to either severely restrict their business operations or actually shut down altogether. While the state and federal government have established multiple avenues, resources and assistance, many of these smaller businesses simply don't have the manpower to find where these resources are available or the expertise to navigate the merit of regulations involved, whether it be in finding help for their own finances, the payroll protection plans, or simply following the guidance as to are they, when can they open, do they have to be closed, all of that. So the economic development committee is proposing the formation of an ad hoc task force that will help the Milis business owners alleviate some of these burdens. And this task force would serve as a single point of reference for businesses to both obtain guidance for finding the state and federal programs available and to unite as a business community to organize reopening initiatives. We all know that there's going to be phases involved in what businesses can open at what time. But in a sense, that's really going to leave businesses, each individual business owner with the task of reinventing the wheel. Do they simply open their door? Who knows they've opened their door? How do they announce it, sort of just sticking it on a Facebook site and hoping that the town sees it? So we would like to begin, establish this task force, which would be a separate and independent organization from town government. It would consist of members of the town's private business sector along with a liaison from the economic development committee. Either one of the committee members or Bob Weiss as the director. So we've set out a few items initially that the task force would be charged with. And initially, one of the first and most crucial steps would be to establish a central database of Milis businesses. Currently, there is not, there's no place, there is a single list of business owners' contact information, which no one has really thought of up until this Corona pandemic began. In March, the EDC wanted to notify the town businesses that we had put together a lot of resources with regards to where they can find different programs. But we had no way of notifying all these businesses. So the committee members literally went door to door to local businesses handing out flyers with links and directing them to our page with, which, you know, some businesses didn't even know existed. And in today's world, this is, that's just ludicrous, that to notify businesses of something, we would literally be going door to door. So that would be their first, what I would consider the most crucial step. They would also be charged with establishing their own media presence outside of the town's website or Facebook page. The EDC would provide links in our page to the task force, to their separate media presence. But again, this is intended to be a private organization run. They would be collecting information from various state and federal agencies, as well as whatever Milis would be able to provide them, and organize it and make it available to the businesses in a centralized location. And then also work on organizing reopening initiatives. The whole idea around this is to create a trusted, credible organization that Milis business owners can both be available, find availability of information, resources and each other. So that is something that we feel is really crucial, is helping, is giving a springboard for these businesses, a way to get back to business. And to, there are a lot of people in Milis that want to support our local businesses. And this is a way to let them know they're opening. This is, you know, we're bringing these businesses back to life, so to speak. So that would be really the first phase of this task force. Does anybody have any questions on that? Before I jump to phase two?
He's drunk.
I actually did it. I actually figured it out. So ultimately, once the current pandemic crisis has passed, businesses are fully reopened. It's our goal that this task force will develop into a sustainable, self-driven business council. We see that with county-driven, larger town and cities have business organizations. And we feel that Milis, even though we are small, we have a tight-knit community. And we feel that the businesses would be, would benefit from having this sort of private organization. And the EDC wants to, we feel that we're in the position to help develop this organization. As I mentioned about six weeks ago when we were handing out flyers, this effort was all well received. It was clear that there was, the response illustrated that there was both a need and a receptiveness to some sort of organization of business owners. So that would be, once we can get everybody open and moving forward, that would be the next step, would be to take this ad hoc committee and help form it into a, excuse me, not an ad hoc task force, not a committee, because it would not be run by the town government. It would be privately run. We would simply provide, the EDC would provide contact and support. But really just to help them build into a private organization that could encourage collaborative business building promotions, serve as ambassadors for future companies that are seeking assistance in navigating the Milis process, and really show that Milis is positioned to welcome and support innovative entrepreneurs. So that is the ultimate goal of this task force. But we really do want to focus within the next couple of months, really getting information out there, the support that's needed to the local businesses, and helping them unite in coming back to life and bringing, you know, bringing back our economy into Milis.
Thank you, Nicole. I am the select board liaison to the economic development committee. It's a really great committee. It comes, the members who were appointed by this board come from all different perspectives with a common bond of either having, for example, Nicole's area of expertise in planning, different, various employers with different backgrounds in that respect. And I can tell you, as one of the people who was delivering those flyers by hand, it was a really interesting experience to hear, to be able to say this is government trying to help and then to get the response from people who, many of whom said, gee, we'd like to become more involved. So they were, we feel like we've created somewhat of a springboard with that outreach to move in the direction that other towns have moved. And we know from dealing with the Massachusetts Economic Development Council, as well as Mass Development, that having a business council, which is not a new idea to us, but now that we have an economic development and planner, as well as a committee to be part of his kitchen cabinet, as it were, group of thinkers and planners, that we now are in a really good position to deliver something that's very important, which is a business-centric community at a point of very, very high need. So our goal as the committee is to use this need, necessity being the mother of invention, is to use this as the springboard for something that will benefit the town for many years to come. And there's a lot of excitement in rallying around this focus. And the committee is really pleased to bring this and share this with the town. and share this with the town on the basis of having received very positive feedback from businesses thus far. And do any of my colleagues have any questions about this? No? Shaking of head? No? So, the deliverables, I think, in this-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It shocks you to know that I have something to say?
No. I'm glad you're interested in it, Jim.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation from the chair, from Nicole, from Bob. I think that, from my point of view, as a member of the board, this is the kind of recommendation, policy recommendation that I had anticipated would come from the Economic Development Committee. So, it's good to see, it's an important innovation. And I'm assuming that the, in terms of the execution, the sort of the referee again is Mr. Weiss, who, if we're doing this right, you're going to have to get two jobs, two halves of an economic developer, because, you know, that's two presentations. We're also economically development-driven. I just want to be sure that, from my point of view, Mr. Weiss and the committee get the kind of input and support they need, not only from us, but, you know, we still, this particular issue is still a public health issue. I'm sure that the folks on the Board of Health and the Health Director are more than happy to engage in this so that we can support businesses opening safely. And that would be important, as well as, you know, the public safety folks. But I think this is a terrific initiative.
I'd like to also comment that I'm glad to see individuals taking responsibility to anticipate what needed to be done, as opposed to reacting after the fact, so that there's some upfront planning, some consideration given, not just to the business, but to the individuals, because the individuals are the ones who make up these businesses. So, I commend you, Nicole, and Bob, for what you've done. And I think it's precisely the right direction that we should be heading in. And more power to you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about this topic? Well, I really want to thank, I want to acknowledge, yes, Bob Weiss no longer sleeps. And I want to thank also Nicole, whose knowledge of planning is extremely useful, because so many of the conversations that we hope to have and hope to sustain, and are obviously having with tonight, have to do, there's a planning and bylaw component to them. And to have that right at the front door of the town with respect to her participation in particular on this committee has been incredibly helpful. We've hosted state officials on the first of two downtown district walkthroughs. So, there's a lot of other things that are going on that will be presented to the board and the community over time. But we really wanted to acknowledge that it was going to be very important to have basically a center of gravity for our reopening messaging, both for, to support the businesses, but also to guide the community and potential shoppers and diners and such. So, anybody who wants to get involved in this, please reach out to Bob Weiss if you are an employer or an employee, frankly, who finds this to be of interest, or somebody who wants to contribute to skills such as graphic design. We would love to have you as part of this initiative. And we thank you so much in advance for all the leadership, Bob, that you have provided, and to Nicole as well, and Jim Sobitis, who's the Chair of the Committee. Amanda Borgenman, I think, is on here. She's essential to the group as well. So, we thank everybody very much. And I'm going to, with that, move on to a budget presentation of sorts with a little preamble, and I'm going to ask the town administrator to pick up where this leaves off. Agenda item 093 was a very extensive examination of the DPW Department circa 2020. It won't surprise people who are watching budget numbers with the myriad of unfunded federal and state mandates that all fall into the lap of DPW and the charter to be very smart, and yet, at the same time, very protective with our resources, our water, our sewer, our environmental health and safety, our roads in particular, that we're asking more and more as the town grows and as different demands are expected. And so, as a result, it was made, the decision was made by the Select Board to bring in an independent consulting firm with some familiarity to the town with an expertise in governmental operations management and oversight. And the team of Bernard Lynch and Carl Valenti are here, and there were other people involved in this. And I also want to acknowledge that there were many people within state government, or town government, I'm sorry, and beyond, who contributed as people who either subject experts or interested parties to inform the ultimate study and the short 90-page report that was provided to us as an outcome. And so, today, the purpose of this agenda item is to report to the community and to the Select Board and to everybody with a budget hat on what the key outcomes from this examination were, so that people understand if they're sitting at home, and perhaps they're frustrated with something they think should be done differently. This study will probably unlock some of the answers and provide us with a, pun intended, roadmap for the future. And I'm going to invite Mr. Gazinski, who was the chief liaison for this project, to pick it up from here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you've covered the background of this very well. As the board knows, back in November, the board decided to conduct an accelerated study of the DPW as a comprehensive management and operations analysis of the Town of Milis DPW Department's existing operations, service levels, infrastructure management, and staffing levels for all DPW and enterprise systems, which include water, sewer, and stormwater. We then went through the process of soliciting different consulting firms and Community Paradigm Associates. Was successful in their proposal. And as you see from the report before you, they have done an extraordinarily thorough job in reviewing and analyzing the DPW. I've had discussions with the DPW Director and the Finance Director. And we're all very pleased with the thoroughness of the report. We are also pleased that, in addition to this report, Community Paradigm Associates has agreed to conduct some additional work for us to further some of the areas of special interest to the town in coming up with some additional analysis of different aspects of the DPW, such as enterprise fund methodology, and looking at the organizational structure and some of the job descriptions that we are working on and moving forward with organizational improvements to the department. So, I didn't know if the DPW Director or the Finance Director have any comments at this time, but I know that Mr. Lynch and Mr. Valente have been patiently waiting to give their presentation. And I'm sure they can outline in detail their findings and recommendations to the town.
Great. Well, thank you, Mike, and thank you to the board. And Chairman, Chair, I want to thank you in particular. I'm assuming you can all hear me speaking. So, do you have my PowerPoint that you're going to put up? Or would you like me to put it up on my end and control it?
No, if you can, actually, it would be easier for you. That way, you can just toggle through your slides.
Perfect. Well, let me just give you one second here to-
That is okay. We are all figuring this out. I figured that was easier, if you need to go back to a slide, or you'll-
Be with me for one second.
You're more than I would.
Yep. All right.
And for the viewing public, I was going to say, this is still the Zoom meetings. While we're starting to get more adept at it, it is still taking us some time, so bear with us.
Yeah. Just, let's see, what's that?
Okay, just, I should say-
Hopefully, when we get it down pat, we won't have to put anymore.
That's exactly what I said earlier, Jim.
As humans.
So, you have to share your screen at the bottom somehow.
Yeah, I'm trying to share my screen, and I got my PowerPoint there.
Oh, there it goes. There it is.
Yeah, I just want to get it to, perfect.
There you are. Look at you, a whiz, Bernie.
Well, I just have to remember each time I go on how to do this. So, I will, I understand you, the board has been, and everyone watching, has been dealing with a lot of other issues tonight. So, you're behind in your schedule, and you've still got a lot of work ahead of you. So, I will go as quickly as I can to make sure that we hit on all of the key points. It's already been mentioned that Carl and I are here tonight to talk about the work that we've done. And we had a couple of other people that also worked on this with us, in particular Peter Heckingblech there, who did the background work with regards to the peer community. So, I'll get to that in a second. It's also been mentioned, Laurie mentioned, that we had a number of local people that were involved in this work. And we spent quite a bit of time interviewing everyone, and then going back and adding, "Ask me for more help" in particular. I want to thank Jim McKay. We bothered Jim repeatedly over the course of the last couple of months, several months, for information. He's been very helpful in all of that. So, I want to thank all of the local people that were part of this process. It's also been mentioned in terms of how this started out, and I don't need to necessarily go over everything again. But essentially, a lot of this came out of the desire to look at the fee structure and how that all worked together with the enterprises, looking at the staffing, looking at the infrastructure needs of the town. There's certainly, infrastructure is an issue that exists in every community. You know, that's where all of the town's physical assets are held. And it's worth literally hundreds of millions of dollars that need to be maintained on a regular basis. Otherwise, it's money wasted if it's not maintained properly. And what I know through work that we've done in the past for the town is interested in making sure that the operation of the town is done efficiently and effectively. And to the Chair's point, that becomes even more important given the upcoming budget strains that cities, towns, states are going to be facing in response to the COVID-19 impact. So, it's important that we be able to give you recommendations that will help you maintain the infrastructure while doing it in an affordable way. Our issues really were focused on those funding sources, the management practices, the organizational structure, the staffing, and how the department is actually operating. Our methodology was conducting interviews of all of the people that I listed within the acknowledgements, compiling just hundreds of documents that we've pulled together to use in our work, talking to the peer communities of Air, Blackstone, Middleton, Salisbury, Upton, and West Boylston. All of those communities have, you know, they're similar in terms of size, they're similar in terms of population, and they all have a comprehensive Department of Public Works. There's a couple variations in a couple of those, but we were able to make adjustments for those. When people are wondering, "Why did you choose those?", it's because they're most similar to the Town of Milis in terms of their size and their physical condition, their organizational structure. And I've listed out here the various topics, and these can be seen by anyone who looks at the report, so I won't go into a lot of detail on that. But we took all of that information, we analyzed it, we've come up with findings and recommendations that we'll present to you tonight. And of course, as is also been mentioned, we've generated a very comprehensive report. And I'm pleased to hear that Public Works Director, and the Finance Director, and obviously the Town Administrator, were all pleased with the comprehensiveness and thoroughness of the work that we did. We, you all know about your public works and the work that they do in terms of managing the infrastructure in the Town of Milis. You know, there's varies from town to town, but the Town of Milis, you have roads, you have water, you have sewer, you have stormwater, a transfer station, parks, and cemeteries. Another department, it's across the Commonwealth. You might have roads and water, but you may not have sewer. You might have, certainly all of them probably have stormwater. But as you will point out in our report, Milis really is at the front end, the lead in terms of what they're doing with stormwater. And I think that's notable. So, you have a comprehensive Department of Public Works that's doing this, and that's the mission that they have. In terms of funding, again, because of the nature of your public works, you utilize enterprise funds with water and sewer. You've taken a lead in putting in place a stormwater enterprise, which really is the recognized now best practice for communities because of the work that needs to take place with regards to stormwater. And you have the general fund, the tax dollars. And in your case, you have a transfer station, which receipts come in from those people that utilize that transfer station. So, that's where the revenue comes from, and that's what your mission is. Again, you know your department. I think notable, though, is that you did have a somewhat strange situation in your organization before, where the town administrator actually served as the director. I think it was very wise to split that apart and have the town administrator has enough responsibility just running the overall operation of the town. And you really need someone that can focus on the public works function. And separating those out made a tremendous amount of sense. And then, of course, I've listed out here your other staffing. And we, you know, we looked at the equipment, and we listed the equipment and facilities in our report and gave quite a bit of information on that. Overall, overall, we felt the department was well-run, generally well-run, and executing basic responsibilities of the public works department. But like every organization, Carl has been, has been in this business for a long time, as have I, we certainly are of the opinion, and I think many of you are probably of the similar opinion, that every organization can get better. And so, certainly, in talking with members of the town government, the sense of everyone was, they wanted to improve the overall operation and do what was necessary in terms of resources, in terms of structure, organizational structure, and so on, to make the Department of Public Works work more effectively. So, I'm finding the recommendations break down into basically five categories: operational systems, asset control and investment, financial administration, focusing on enterprise funds, and we'll get into those. Carl will really take over on that part of this report. The organizational structure, your staffing. And then we have some miscellaneous, some additional recommendations that we saw that when we were out there that we thought, "It may not fit into specifically one of these categories or fall within the absolute scope of our project", but we felt that we should raise them as issues that the town should look at. So, in terms of operational systems, one of the key findings that we had, and this really ties in with a number of different elements. It chimes in with the allocation of, you know, work assignments. It ties into your operations, but it also ties into your assets. It ties into your enterprise funds. And it also relays, in some respects, to the staffing of how effective are you in tracking your workload data? You know, towns, cities and towns have become much more effective in terms of their ability to track workload data so that they can make sure that they're performing to their maximum efficiency. In your particular case, you also have the, as a comprehensive consolidated public works department, you also have the importance of allocating your costs for the purposes of your enterprises. So, you know, we think it's important that the town put in place a system. And fortunately, technology is out there now, and communities are doing this. They're putting in place these computerized maintenance management systems. That's a means by which you can track the workload, the work that's taking place, you can create the data so that you know where to allocate people, you know how to allocate the resources to go, to make those people successful, and you can ensure that the performance is taking place. Fortunately, this is one of those categories that, you know, the town is already working towards this. Jim has already started working towards putting in place this CMMS that will be able to manage the staffing, manage the resources. And as you'll see when I get into the assets a little bit more, it's crucial to actually manage the inventory of the assets that, you know, make up what the job of the DPW is all about. So, our recommendation is that you do that, that you move forward with that. Now, there will be resources that you need to implement this. That's crucial. You know, like any great technology, you know, we're so much more effective now in terms of our ability to manage finances in municipalities because there's technology out there now that makes us better at doing it. But there is an allocation of resources, putting resources aside to implement financial management systems. Likewise, in public works, to put a CMMS, you need to allocate resources, which includes training, it includes the staff time to be able to do that. But the end result will be a more efficient, more effective organization. Policies and procedures. We were very impressed that the town has already put in place a continuity of operations plan. Many departments of public works do not have this. Uh, many departments of Public Works do not have this. Uh, you know, just in the, what we're living through right now with COVID, uh, you can see that government, local governments really need to have plans in place to, uh, manage daily operations as well as emergencies. Uh, what's, we didn't see within that, uh, continuity, continuity of operations plan is some policies and procedures, uh, something that guides the staff and guides the management. Uh, if something were to happen and they, someone needed to just parachute in and run that department, uh, you need to have those policies and procedures, the standard operating procedures in place so that they could effectively manage that. The American Public Works Association does have an accreditation program. Uh, we don't think you necessarily need to go through that, uh, to that level and certainly, uh, put the resources towards that, it would be great if you could, but that's the, a step that's farther down the road. What you really need to do though is take advantage of the, uh, APWA, uh, policies and procedures that could be a template for putting in place those, uh, operating procedures, those policies that could be incorporated into the, uh, continuity operations plan. Uh, strategic planning. Uh, with the move to a Director of Public Works that is not the Town Administrator, uh, we really feel it's important that the town, uh, embark upon, uh, and, and many departments, uh, pretty much all departments should be doing this to some level. If you recall when we did our budget present, uh, project for you a couple of years back, uh, we pushed the notion that the town should have a strategic plan. Uh, that some, there should be some comprehensive analysis, challenges, opportunities, the strengths, the weaknesses that are out there, uh, for the town as a whole, but certainly for each department. In the case of Public Works, uh, there's succession planning issues that need to be taken up. There's a multitude of plans that the town has embarked upon to deal with its various enterprises, water, wastewater, stormwater, uh, excuse me, sewer, uh, stormwater, uh, there's road projects that you, we'll talk about in a few minutes. Uh, something should pull all of that together into a strategic plan for a five-year period that says, this is what we want to accomplish, these are our goals, these are our objectives. Uh, there is time that goes into that, but that's the type of, uh, you know, larger overview that we think would be helpful to make the Department of Public Works, uh, more effective. And then work plans. This is really getting down from this, the thirty thousand foot level down to the, you know, thousand foot level in terms of what's the calendar that's in place. This ties in with the CMMS, it ties in with the strategic plan, uh, you know, that you identify the calendar of what are the activities that are taking place on an ordinary and an extraordinary basis or project-specific basis, so that you know that it's the winter season, this is what is what needs, the, the manpower needs to be doing, this is what needs to be taking place in terms of, uh, purchasing materials, supplies, maintenance work. Uh, and then that, you know, carries you through in each and other season and drives the work for the general foreman, director, uh, and for the, obviously for the workers to make sure that the work is taking place. Asset control and investment. Uh, the department does have a basic inventory of assets, which is great. Uh, it has its equipment, it knows from the work that's been done by your outside engineering firm what, uh, the inventory is with your water, wastewater, you're, you're doing it with stormwater in terms of the number of culverts you have, uh, you know, the, uh, all of the, uh, uh, infrastructure that's in place for that system. Uh, but what we don't have is a comprehensive inventory that pulls it all together and is more robust in terms of its information. And they can then tie that to the work plans and assignments that we talked about, the operational systems. Uh, again, the CMMS is an opportunity to do that. And so, we feel that that's a, a way that you could put that inventory together that will then drive your capital investments moving forward and drive your, uh, work assignments uh, to make sure that that, those assets that you're inventorying are, are maintained on a regular basis. Pavement management. Uh, I, we heard from many people that the roads of Millis need work. Uh, there were efforts, I know, for, uh, a comprehensive road project several years back, uh, that, that did not move forward. Uh, but we heard loud and clear from people that there was a sense that pavement, the road conditions really need to be prioritized. Uh, in looking through some of your, uh, select board meetings of the last couple of years, this has been a topic of, uh, moving forward with some type of pavement management system. Uh, we think that, uh, that should be a priority, that you should use the CMMS that you, uh, if you do move forward with that, and your outside engineering to update and improve the pavement management system. Uh, and put in place a pavement condition index number that goes with that. And then have goals set forth that would have you focusing, uh, your, uh, activities on an annual basis towards a long-term strategy to get to a certain overall pavement condition index goal. Uh, you know, many communities try to get to a, basically a C-plus or a B-level of, of pavement condition uh, that's tied to an index number. Uh, we think that's worthwhile, uh, it gives people something to strive for and helps to determine how to manage your roads on a short, medium and long-term basis, uh, so that those conditions are, are constantly improving. Preventive maintenance facilities, uh, you do have with, uh, the work that Kleinfelder has done for you some great, uh, utility management plans that we were, uh, advised on. Uh, you do have an equipment replacement plan, but, uh, we don't, we didn't see any records regarding, uh, specific equipment maintenance activities, but, uh, we're sure that that's, that's probably taking place. Uh, you do have a new facility coming online, so you're doing things about preventive maintenance and facilities. But again, record-keeping is crucial here. You can't measure what you don't, uh, keep data on. Uh, and so, we, we recommend that you, uh, again, use that CMMS to track the maintenance of all your assets. The other observation I would make is that, uh, you know, the, the DPW, uh, facility is being built. Uh, what is unclear is it does not appear that your, the, um, uh, Department Administration is going to be located in the same, uh, as your operational, uh, pay, uh, end of DPW. Um, I, I'm not sure where that exactly stands, but if there was a way to move that to the same, uh, facility, uh, that I think would be helpful. I will put this over to Carl at this point, and Carl, you just let me know when you're ready to move on, but we're going to talk about financial administration, which I will intro by saying that, uh, this was the number one issue that everyone, uh, really talked to us about, of talking about the methodology of how you, uh, run the enterprises with regards to water and sewer.
Great, thanks Bernie. And, uh, good evening, board members. Um, as Bernie just said, um, as we did our interviews of both board and committee members and staff, um, the number one question that came up is for the enterprise funds, are the direct and indirect costs reasonable that the town is using? Um, and our, our recommendation is that there should be a complete revision of that methodology. That the methodology that's being used, um, was developed by, um, the previous administration, not the folks who are there now. Um, and you need to have something that your DPW director and your finance director and your town administrator can own as their own and, and defend, uh, that methodology. Um, probably most important in revising that methodology is the need for actual data on staffing. Uh, the amount of staff time that is associated with water, with sewer and with, uh, stormwater. And, and there's, we gave you three different options for doing that. Um, I won't go into those right now because I know you're limited for time. Um, but we think that's, that's going to be a key. Um, I will say Bernie has talked a bit about option one, the CMMS system, um, which I would say is the gold standard for tracking time. Um, but that's probably, um, a number of months off before you implemented it. So, option two, uh, and option three, two manual systems for tracking time are, are something that could be implemented right away. Um, but our sense is you need a full year of data, uh, uh, staff time by task, and eventually working towards a three years of rolling data, so you can build your budgets for those enterprise funds based on three years of rolling data. Uh, Bernie, if you go to the next slide, in terms of the indirect costs, um, again, uh, we need to develop a robust and transparent methodology. And we've tried to provide you with a number of models, uh, and the source document for implementing that around indirect costs. Indirect costs can always seem like somewhat of blue smoke and mirrors, but it, it doesn't have to be. Um, you can base your indirect cost analysis, and I give it examples of what we mean by indirect cost. And you can base that on, um, various data points, um, that are easily quantifiable and, um, success, successor Town Administrators or Finance Directors or DPW Directors can continue to follow that methodology. Um, would you develop something, uh, along these lines? Also, uh, um, a couple of other issues related to the water and sewer. One is under retained earnings. Now, as a former top manager, um, I got really excited when I saw what the retained earnings are, because they were between twenty-four and fifty-four percent of revenue for water and between twenty and forty-four percent, um, for sewer. Um, but as a practical person, that is a very high level of retained earnings to have. We should be recognized for having it that high, but that's, that's probably more robust than needs to be. And what we've suggested is that again, you have a methodology that, uh, you can use for determining what is the appropriate level of retained earnings, and we've given you the five categories for that policy around retained earnings, uh, as part of our recommendation. Next slide, Bernie. Um, the other side of water and sewer analysis is the consumption date. Um, and the town is to be recognized, it has a very robust analysis, um, in terms of its consumption data and setting, which is used for setting of waters and sewer rates. And you've been working for a number of years, uh, with your engineering firm, Ty and Bond, to develop that, um, data. The one thing that we would strongly recommend, and we talked to your consultant about this, is the second bullet here of the recommendations. The Ty and Bond is not giving you any projections on how your permitted residential growth is going to affect your rates. And we believe that there's a very good chance that your water rates and sewer rates will come down as this new growth comes online, um, for the simple reason that your fixed costs of water and sewer, um, are going to be spread among a larger base of customers. Um, so we suggested in our report, and I had a verbal conversation with Ty and Bond about this, that they, uh, consider doing future projections on rates given the growth that you are, have already permitted on, uh, for residential developments. Next slide. Uh, in our discussions with the DPW Director, he indicated that your water meters are fifteen years or older. Uh, and what you will find if you talk to any DPW Director is water meters, as they get older, they under-record. I've never in all my years in this business found a water meter that over records. It says you use more water than you have. And so, as they under-record, um, in fact, you're not collecting the revenue you should um, from those customers that have the older meters, and those who may have newer meters are, are paying their full share. So it raises an equity issue among customers. Um, the best practice is that meters be replaced every ten to twelve years. Um, and so, we suggest that you consider that in, in your future capital plans that you provide for the replacement of your water meters that are, uh, in excess of twelve years. Next slide. Um, sewer connection requirements. So we learned that although many of your residents and parcels have access to your sewer system, in fact, they're not connected to the system. They've chosen to stay on their septic systems. And that had some, uh, pretty substantial concern on our part because that has the potential for limiting your future development in town. So how's that possible? So you, um, provide, are you receiving water, uh, sewer treatment from your, the Charles River Pollution Control District? And you're setting a certain amount of sewage there now, which they've measured, but they've also considered or have an implied number for all the parcels in town that have access to your sewer system but aren't using it. So I heard the chairman speak earlier about you've now reached your maximum at the Charles River facility. Um, and you have reached the maximum under the way they have to conduct their calculation. Uh, but in fact, you're well below maximum because so many of your parcels are not connected to the sewer system. So our suggestion to the, the board is that, um, we are given a timeline where, uh, parcels have to, or properties have to connect to the sewer system. And if they don't connect, then you buy back the better one from them to open up capacity, um, in town, um, which I know is very important to the town, particularly as you talk about your economic development plan, which I heard you speak of earlier. Next slide, I'm going to switch now to stormwater management program. Um, and I'll reiterate, um, what Bernie said because I think it's so important that really the board and the town should be recognized for its forward planning around stormwater management, um, setting up the utilities, setting up the fee program, and starting to do a long-term plan around stormwater management. Next slide. Um, that being said, we have the same concerns, and we raise the same concerns around the cost methodology um, as we had with the water and sewer methodology. And we think that you need to do a completely revised cost methodology around your, your stormwater costs. Um, a lot of that methodology, if you do the water and sewer side, you'll be able to use a very similar methodology. On the stormwater side, with the one key being again, to get that staff data, how much staff time is associated with stormwater, just like you need to know how much staff time is associated with water and sewer. Next slide, we were asked about the, um, the process where residents can appeal their stormwater fee. And, um, we were pleased to find that there was actually a very limited number of, of residents and property owners who appealed their stormwater fee. But we are recommending that you consider creating a stormwater appeals board. And this isn't a significant issue, and it certainly is not a criticism at all of your DPW Director and your Finance Director and, and Treasure Collector who handle the appeals now. Um, but they have enough of their own work they have to deal with. And many times if you can create a citizens board to hear appeals, um, residents feel that they're talking to their peers, they're not talking to town staff. Um, so in many cases it's more acceptable for residents, they feel more comfortable going to their, their neighbors, so to speak, to hear their appeals, and it will take some of that burden off of your town staff of hearing those appeals. But having said that, you had a very small number of appeals, um, and I think that's because of all the, the work that went into developing your fee process. We were asked during our interviews whether the current costs of the stormwater, um, compared to what Kleinfelder, your consulting engineer, had projected when you were doing this, uh, preparation work two or three years ago. And in fact, we found that Kleinfelder was estimating that the cost of the program was going to be around six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. And you've been right in that ballpark for your first two years of operation and what's projected for next year. You've been between six hundred and ten and six hundred and forty thousand dollars. That being said, um, Kleinfelder was very clear in their recommendation that that level of revenue and that level of expenditure is only covering the cost of the day-to-day operation of storm, stormwater management. It is not covering your very extensive capital infrastructure which will need to be addressed under your MS4 permit that you have. So, you, I know you've started work on a stormwater management plan. Um, it's going to be very important for the town to really look at it not only as a long-term plan, but specifically for the next five years, what's for the next five years, what's needed to be addressed, and then coming up with a funding scheme for addressing those costs. But the current funding that you have, and the current amount you're charging for parcel owners, is only covering limited day-to-day operations. The next slide. We were asked about the fee structure. In fact, was the fee structure that was envisioned three years ago, how did that compare to what's actually occurred since you've imposed the fee on stormwater? So when Kleinfeldt did their work, they estimated 60% of the parcels would pay less than $100 a year. It turns out a little bit less than that, not quite 50, a little over 51%, the parcels are paying less than $100 a year. But I'll reiterate, that level of fees is not sufficient to fund your capital infrastructure needs that you'll be facing, and that you'll need to implement under your MS4 permit. Okay, Bernie, I think I'll turn it back to you now. Thanks.
And the next area that we looked at was your organizational structure. You know, I noted earlier that there's been sort of a change that took place, I think about two or three years ago, where wisely moved the public works management out of the town administrator office and put it in the separate director of public works. The administrative count where all the hats, needs a team approach to that. What does result, though, in what we looked at, is a limited distribution of management and administrative responsibilities within the DPW itself. We think that, as you've heard from Carl, and you've heard from the other part of my presentation, we think the CMMS is a great tool and will provide some real benefits to the town. But there is going to be a demand on, further demand on the administration as a result of that. So, and you've heard me talk about the need for, you know, utilizing that data, utilizing the information that you have to manage more effectively, and really look at the DPW director playing a more strategic role within the overall operation of the Public Works Department. So in order for that to happen, we think that the director needs to delegate off more responsibilities, expand the responsibilities of the foreman, the departmental assistant. And you have these two enterprises, water and sewer, very technical, and there isn't actually a supervisor for those two enterprises. The work that takes place in managing those, it's all placed upon the foreman, who does an outstanding job for you, very skilled, very knowledgeable, and very helpful for us in terms of our study, because he has that wealth of information. But it puts a lot on that position, puts a lot on him, to have all of those responsibilities. And if we're going to start to delegate off more some of the director's day-to-day administration to have a director play a more strategic role within the town, within the department, we think it makes sense to consider a water and sewer supervisor at some point in the near future. In terms of stormwater, you did add a labor position when you took over, when you created the stormwater management program. It's limited in-house technical expertise, everything goes outside, heavy reliance on consulting engineers. So we think that this, you know, a town the size of Milis, particularly with the amount of capital projects that, you know, you've done some good work over the last couple of years, building a capital budget, capital plan together, that really should be a focus in terms of maintaining your infrastructure. One way or another, you're always going to pay for infrastructure, challenges to make sure that you pay the least amount by maintaining it more effectively. So you need to do that capital investment. We think a town engineer could help oversee the stormwater management, could help oversee the CMMS when it's acquired, and also add capacity for capital project management. And that would reduce the way that this could be funded, would enlarge productivity from lesser reliance on consulting engineers and bringing that expertise in-house. I would note that many town engineers also play a crucial role in working with their planning boards at the towns in project review, and that to be a resource that your planning board to take advantage of as well. In other staffing, one of the things that I think leads to some of the questions about the enterprise fund costs is that your staff is cross-trained to work in all the different enterprises, as well as the non-enterprise aspects of public works. So that's something that I think is a great resource for you in terms of the flexible deployment of your personnel. It makes for a very lean staff. But particularly looking at the peer communities, your staffing is almost full-time equivalents fewer than peer communities. And it's, you know, it's likely your preventive maintenance is suffering as a result of that, which is going to create some long-term costs for you. If we're looking at trying to reduce overall costs to the town in the long run, you need to do more in terms of preventive maintenance, but in order to do that, you need staff. So we're recommending that, particularly with the additional growth that's taking place in the town, with the Glen Ellen development, some of these new businesses that we were hearing about tonight that might be coming in, some of the other, I think there's an assisted living facility that's locating in town, some other developments taking place that use some of that new growth revenue to allocate into public works. We do think that there's a potential there for adding some laborers would improve, serve you well in the future in terms of your long-term costs. Short-term, it would, you know, you could pay for with that new growth, but also have the opportunity to perhaps reduce some of the need for some of the seasonal workers that you have. So there's really need to look at the cost implications of that. The other recommendations we have, the sort of miscellaneous, is we did get some positive feedback from your school department with regards to the possibility of a side to head down the road to a decentralized facility department. We think that that's something, and Carl and I both have experience with this, so actually, in talking with Carl about it recently, he has more experience, but because he did it in a couple of different towns, and I managed it in one, and it was already in place, and I did it in another, of setting up one of these centralized facility departments that manages all municipal buildings, including schools. How that shaped, how it all works out requires some work, but we think that there's some opportunities there for, again, for some savings that could come to the town. It just really needs some dialogue and some collaboration, and hopefully, and there's some great models now. Carl had it in Lexington, he put together it in Needham. I did it in Chelmsford, where we created these facility departments, and they have proven very beneficial in these communities. You do have an issue with your transfer station, that it's, depending exactly how you look at the numbers, it's either just breaking even or a small amount of loss, and probably a large amount of loss, where we could fully allocate all the costs into that. So long-term, we think that you need to look at your transfer station as to its operations, its fee structure. It serves a very important role in your town for a segment, certainly for a large share of the population, but it needs some additional work to look at how that's going to be operated in the future. We do think that there's some opportunities for, again, some increased efficiency by departments, particularly the Public Works Department, through direct entry of financial data into the financial management system, unit system. We do note, after talking to some of the other peer communities, some of them are doing a little bit more in terms of accounting for Park and Cemetery staff, so that you can, again, recognize the full resources that are being allocated to these. So we think that, again, once you start allocating, you know, sort of gathering data on staff time, you could do that for Park and Cemetery as well, so you'd have some real performance data that could run with that. And lastly, and again, this is similar to what we talk about on a regular basis with communities, you know, there's a need for information for your residents and for you as decision-makers in terms of the job that's being done. And the DPW should work towards, particularly with the CMMS, if that's, when that's implemented, to utilize that information to spread out to the community and increase the overall communication of that information to the residents, to the taxpayers, and to, again, to you as decision-makers. I know that Loring puts communication up as a priority within town government during her time as on the board, and this really fits in nicely to that as well. So that, I think, is our total presentation. We tried to be as brief as possible and get all the information out to you. We'll be happy to come back in. I think Mike and I have talked about potentially coming in again to meet with the board a couple months from now, after you move, some of this gets absorbed, but we'd be happy to take any questions and discussion at this time.
Oh, I'm sure nobody has any discussion after all of that. Sheesh. First of all, I want to thank everybody that participated, but most certainly Community Paradigm, for this Herculean effort. I don't know when the last report of such consequence was done specifically for the DPW, but so much has changed from what, you know, we once thought of as a DPW function. It's much more sophisticated, there's a lot more technology, there's a lot more metrics, there are a lot of unfunded mandates, there's never enough money to go around. And our job as town leadership is to hear a dispassionate, objective assessment that's grounded in best practices of the industry, as well as other communities in Massachusetts. And I think it's just really important for the town residents to understand that we hear them when they complain that their roads haven't been paved recently, or that they're struggling with the variety of bills that are coming in. And this whole effort was intended to put us, as I said before, to give us a roadmap for how to build a stronger, but still very cost-conscious DPW. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I do applaud any initiative that is about reinventing government, so I want to pull out that as a recommendation of the consolidation and commingling of facilities and operations and fields. It seems to make a lot of sense. And the way of doing business in government, and I guess I would like your comment, Mr. Lynch or Mr. Valenti, is that the way of running government in 2020 can no longer be what we always had in the past. We have to do business differently. There just isn't enough money to sustain what used to be. And now our struggle is to somewhat disentangle us from one structure and move to a different approach. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on that comment.
No, I would agree completely, and I think that, I think that's, it isn't something that's just happening today, although we see some real pressures, financial pressures that communities are going to be facing in the upcoming year. But I think that, you know, when we look at, particularly here in New England, when we look at infrastructure that's quite old in many cases, how do we, you know, that's additional costs. There are additional costs that go with employee benefits, there are additional costs that go with increased demands for environmental protection, those mandates that you've referenced. There's more and more costs that come, so it's incumbent upon cities and towns to become more nimble, more innovative in terms of their, as you've phrased it, reinventing themselves and reinventing how they operate. And whether that's, you know, looking at the departmental structure, whether it's looking at staffing, whether it's looking at technology, whether it's looking at, you know, service delivery options, you need to do that to make that work. So I couldn't agree more.
I think one of the other challenges is that when we say, gee, we should be doing more partnering with other communities, it seems so obvious, and yet at the same time, the reality is that when it snows, we don't want to be standing in line to wait for Town A to release their snowplow, you know, into our town. And that's just one of, I'm sure, a million different examples. I think that there's a lot of complexity here, and now you've given us something that's very current. And I'm wondering, I think before I open it up to the floor, I think it makes sense for all of us to be informed by Jim McKay's impression of this report. Obviously, this was probably a tough and in some respects validating read from his perspective. He's advocated for restructuring for some time. He always seems to produce the biggest cost items for our board to consider, and there never seems to be a break in the action, and consequently, he never gets a break either. So I think before I open it up to my colleagues, I'd like to invite him to make any comments about your impressions on this report and what you think, or maybe the top two or three things that really need to be seriously considered as we head into fiscal '21.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank Kyle and Bernie, and also Peter. I think when I talked to Peter, he was down in Florida at his home, and it was 85 degrees out, and that was back in January. This task was not, as Bernie said, this is, this took a Herculean task that they did. This was almost every day, this wasn't just a $12, you know, I'm going to ask you questions and go away. I mean, there was follow-up from everybody involved. I'd also like to thank the staff at the DPW, Deirdre, who put all the Excel spreadsheets together for me that I could, you know, send to them. And I'd like to thank the board. I'd like to thank this board and the previous chair, who started listening to me a year or two ago with this reorganization. And I would just, just in closing, because the report is there, we publish it online, the public will be able to read it. I would ask everybody just to go to page 70 and enter conclusions. I couldn't have written it any better than how, I think Bernie or whoever wrote it, states the, you know, the conclusions. We've come a long way in implementing a lot of the stuff that was in the recommendations with the staffing, you know, changing already with the three superintendents that this board allowed to go forward. And I'd like to thank the administration. You know, Mike looked at it. Unfortunately, he doesn't, you know, had to listen to me probably more than he would like to admit it, but he, you know, he listens, and Carol did the same. So in closing, I'd just ask everybody, just look at page 70 in the book, and, you know, the conclusions. Our work is there, we're almost there, you just need to go look it through. So, thank you.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to weigh in, as well as the town administrator. Mr. McCaffrey, would you want to start?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, and thanks to the team that put this together. I think it's now coming upon this board to both digest it and then develop some implementation plans. That's really the key. We've got a lot of good data here, as was indicated earlier. It is, you know, looking at it from experience of the consultants, but also from the, helps us with the outside looking in, because it helps us to clear away some of our preconceptions. But this is, and I'm sure we're all agreeing, this is not the report that gets put on the shelf and somebody finds it five years from now. This is call to action. So this is really, this is really something that we've got to develop our implementation plans around, and we have to stage it, because obviously, we can't afford to do everything at once, but we can't afford to let this go by the boards.
I agree with what my colleagues are saying. I would also say that we have to look at the report as it's written, and then take into consideration not only the financial considerations of the town, but the organizational construct that's being proposed versus what's in place in the town now. And as I look at it, it does tell me that there are probably some changes that are going to have to be made in the organization to meet the needs of the community in a more productive manner, and that's part of what I'm taking out of this. We also have to look at it in terms of the costs of implementing even something like CMMS, which at this time, I have no idea what those costs would be, particularly not just the software product, the implementation of the product, but the maintenance of the product, and what kind of personnel costs we're talking about. I have some feel for how computer systems work. I don't know what this one is like. There are some other pieces of the organization that I have some questions with, the chargebacks associated with the enterprise funds to the general fund and vice versa, the way in which the personnel are utilized, some of the points that you've brought up in the report, other things having to do with consolidation of maintenance organizations between the schools and the town itself, although I consider and look at schools as just a large department within the town. We still have to look at better ways to utilize what resources we have, and this could be a driving force in that. So I think there is a lot of information here that has to be looked at, and you've given us a different perspective on how to look at it and to potentially make some revisions in how we approach the whole organization and utilization of the personnel within this department.
I'm going to ask our town administrator, who's been way deep in this process, to comment on this from your perspective, as well as the town's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, I believe this is an excellent report from Community Paradigm Associates that encompasses a great deal, lays out a lot of recommendations that the board really needs to discuss, prioritize, and stage out in a way that makes sense to move the department forward. There's a lot to take in here, but I think that, you know, and I agree with Chuck McCaffrey, that this is certainly not something we want to put on a shelf. This has to be, you know, the next steps of putting an action plan in place, the follow-up on the recommendations should be what's next. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning, I think one of the first steps we can start working on is working with Community Paradigm on the enterprise fund methodology, start working on that to, you know, get folks more comfortable with how that is done and moving forward for the town. So I guess I want to thank Community Paradigm, Bernie and his staff did an excellent job. I expected no less, and I continue, I look forward to work with him on these other pieces moving forward. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Is there anybody from the community on this call? I recognize some that are employees that have any questions and would like to participate, especially while we have our consultants here.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? Kathy McInnes?
Yes, Kathy McInnes, past chair.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank Mr. Lynch for forwarding to a certain number of people the executive summary, which was very interesting that you reviewed tonight, and I've had a few days to review it. And the first thing I would just like to offer is that the number one priority of the Board of Selectmen, seeing as I was, has been involved in this in about five or six years, is to purchase the CMMS. As people know, Jim McKay's got the $50 million budget in the town, and I think we're probably past the point where we should see about cost-effectiveness of certain computer-assisted models when fire departments in the school can get those. So it is an 80-page report, but that should be top on the list to figure that out and to find out the training in it and everything. I know Mr. Jermaine said he wanted to look into that. To me, that would be the number one item. And then the other item, Mr. Lynch, may I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Loring. You mentioned that you didn't necessarily need the CMMS to monitor what the work activities are of the staff, and by that I mean which staff is, their days are divided into stormwater, water, sewer, or general. You said that it could also be done manually. Well, you might recall that you did see a, it might have been over one-year manual input provided by the foreman, and what did you feel that that lacked, Jim, that you were looking for more information in? Thank you. Is Jim around? Bernie, Bernie, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Bernie, you want to know, okay?
No, I think what we found was that our understanding in looking at that was that it wasn't quite as, you know, it took quite a bit of, to do a manual accounting takes quite a bit of time and effort, and so that there were some, because there's other responsibilities that go with that function of the foreman to do that and the department assistant. So there were some shortcuts that sort of went through that to make it doable for them and carry out their other functions. So Kathy, to your point about the CMMS being the top priority, I would agree. That's, I think that's pretty clear in our report, that is the, to me, one of the primary priorities. But there are issues regarding training and resources that do need to be worked out. So I think you need to head that way, and it's a much more scientific approach, much more robust approach than the manual that, again, there have to be some shortcuts that sort of taken along the way there. I think one of the issues that we had with the manual that had been taking place was that it was broken up more by sort of estimates or by portions of the day, sort of splitting the days in half and where people go, as opposed to what I would, you know, give as an example, an attorney's office that, or an attorney that can bill out how much money is going to a client A, client B, client C. In your case, it's enterprise A, enterprise B, enterprise C. So I think it's just a better approach to do it that way.
If I might follow up on that, Madam Chair? Please. Thank you. Attorneys, Bernie, are, you know, every six minutes. I think we have to be reasonable here, and I just, as everyone knows, the timesheets that were kept by the foreman were before lunch and after lunch. And so what type of breakdown are you specifically looking for? Are you recommending, Bernie? Is it, you know, I mean, actually a before lunch and an after lunch? It makes pretty good sense.
Yeah, I would probably say that I'd want it more on an hourly basis. I don't know if we have to go six minutes, but I would say it's better to do it hourly basis.
All right, so for the time being, it could probably be a manual way done for that. And you also mentioned, you know, I wrote down, you're looking for three years of data before you determine the division of the workload between the enterprises?
Carl, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. What we'd recommend is that the first year of data, so let's say you started it today, your first year of data would be used for the next budget, the next year's fiscal year budget, creating that budget. And then when you have two years of data, you'd have two years and use those two years for, again, the subsequent year, and work up to three years, not a three-year rolling average. So the three-year rolling average, once you worked up to that, would always be then used for creating the subsequent year budget and the subsequent year fee structure.
Right. So we wouldn't be, you wouldn't be waiting three years. What we would recommend as a methodology is to use that three-year rolling. So, you know, after you get to year four, year one drops off, and then you just get looking at years two, three, and four, and so on and so on.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. That makes sense. But is it fair to assume that after you and Mr. Valenti's view, review of the handwritten sheets, that it appears that the division of the payments to the staff are not equal?
I don't, I don't think we'd be prepared to make that, that comment.
Okay. Oh, another issue is moving the, this is just a general question also, that I think, Mr. McCaffrey, you might be on the capital planning committee, not that, the building committee, permanent. I heard that the DPW garage was made smaller, and it originally did not accommodate the DPW director, and I'm wondering now if the emphasis is to consider putting the DPW director and his staff down there, but now the building's been made even smaller. Could you, could you correct me or clarify that?
Jim, do you want to pipe in on that as well? I mean...
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, because we're both on the committee.
Sure. So the DPW, it was always with the original that we would remain up here at Town Hall, the operations aspect of it. The building was made smaller for cost effectiveness, and most of the, it was cut, I would say, I don't know, maybe 20 feet, 25 feet, and that was due to the cost of it. And most of that came off of the bus drivers' aspect of it. There was a bathroom cut in half, the men's room, the ladies' room all suffered a little bit. So to put the entire DPW office structure here, I think you see what we have here, it would almost have to almost double in the size of what is actually, was approved at town meeting.
Yeah, but these design changes were made as part of the process to bring the project in on budget.
In on budget, correct.
So the things that are going to happen there were part of the original plan, but in some areas, we have downsized a bit just because the initial estimates were too high. We haven't gone out to bid yet, though, so at this point, Jim, I think we were looking at the 75% plans this week, right?
That's correct, yes.
And so the 100% plans are yet to come, and then you need to, then we take, put out the bid and determine, you know, whether the pricing mechanism was correct.
Okay, thank you. So then, I guess the selectmen in conjunction with the DPW director should determine pretty soon whether you want his office down there or not, as recommended by the report here, so...
I think we would have to decide that in the next week, because the planning is moving forward.
I have one question that, you know, to get a town engineer. The planning board subs out one now, and the developer pays for it. If we had a town engineer, would the developer still be able to pay? Mike, do you know this? Would the developer still be able to pay certain fees?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, the...
Well, not, Kathy, you are not the only one that wrote that down, I wanted to ask that. Right away, I said, whoa, the funding mechanism.
I sat next to you, either to the left or the right, three times, and it was, what I remember is, show me the money.
Yeah. The prior town I worked for had a town engineer and who did work for, worked for the planning and zoning, and anytime they worked on a project, that was billed to the applicant or the developer.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's another thing I think of is that with these economic times, we don't even know how much money's coming in from the state now, but if a town engineer could be self-funded just by all of the groups that we pay to consultants, then that's a no-brainer, that, you know, something to look at again, really, with a computer system to purchase. But so far, I'd like to thank everyone for doing this. I was the pain in the neck here that was looking for it, and really, like Loring said, it's great to see that the three of you and Mike and the consultants are really concerned about this, and I see little things in the future that perhaps Bernie and Carl have expertise in that could, you know, help the town out in the future with little sundry projects as a result of this, but I appreciate it, and I appreciate getting it moving again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. I know you participated in the report, and I know that there's a... I hear a voice in the background. Does somebody else want to chime in? No?
If I could, if I could, yes, I just, I did want to note that we did send out everybody that, from the town that participated in the preparation of the report, we sent a copy of the executive summary.
I would imagine that having, and maybe Bernie, you can, we can call you Bernie, right, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
I would imagine that having a town engineer would be like having town-owned council, that you would, it would really streamline permitting, because you wouldn't, there wouldn't be a lag. You would have somebody there who really understands the ecosystem of a town and can make calls, you know, in real time. Yes?
You would have, you would have some benefit by doing it. It's, there's enough work in communities to take advantage of that. You'd still need outside expertise in other areas, but it would be similar to that in some respects, yes.
Can you just comment from the broad perspective? You know, we're gripping the third rail when I say the compound word stormwater, and I'm just wondering what you see in other towns, and if you could comment on kind of where Milis falls in terms of having gotten out in front of it, although it hasn't been a perfectly smooth, you know, effort, but just the, what we've done thus far and what your take on it is.
Well, again, I think both Carl and I mentioned that we were very impressed that the town did take on the, implementing the stormwater management program and putting in place the enterprise fund. Like water, like sewer, in some communities, like trash, you know, these are services and programs that really can be allocated to specific users, and so it meets that requirement under basic public finance theory. And so many communities, arguably larger communities, have done what Milis has done, but Milis certainly was at the forefront in terms of putting this program in place and ensuring compliance and having a funding strategy to do it.
Are there any other comments that you would want to leave us with? And I think when you, when I say us, maybe as a pass-through to the taxpayers at home who are shaking their heads and feeling that, like, this is a really, you know, large empire, and I just want my roads, what would you say to them?
Well, I think that, you know, it already came up tonight with regards to your economic development, and economic development is the way that communities have to look at the way that they're going to bring in revenue. In order for a business to locate in town, they need water, they need sewer. There are environmental issues, some would consider the mandates that come down, but there are real consequences if you don't manage your stormwater properly. So it's, Public Works is more than just, is more than just roads. It really, that's what people see on a day-to-day basis because they drive it, but, you know, you want to turn on your tap in the morning to, you know, get your water, you want to, you know, you have to have a place for that water to go to, you know, it's a real complex organization that you're managing with Public Works, and those are your assets that people depend upon to decide where to live and where to work.
So within our fee with your firm for this particular project, Bernie, we're going to be posting this report, I think tomorrow morning. The town administrator will have that on the DPW website and maybe with a link to the finance committee. So let's assume that the community wants to dig in and different people, you know, have questions. Certainly, you know, the finance committee's going to have questions, other people who are kind of interested in this topic or frustrated with it are going to have questions. What would you recommend? First of all, A, do we have the threshold to do that within our existing fee package with you? And if so, B, what would you recommend that process be to be manageable?
I'm not sure I fully follow the question.
Well, if we want to follow up with questions, I want to make sure that we're still doing so and not adding to...
Yeah, yeah. No, we, I've already, two, three things. One, I've already, you know, working with Mike, we've already indicated that, you know, we are prepared to come back again to have another discussion if there are questions raised and sort of brainstorming some ideas regarding implementation. But beyond that, the, Carl has offered, and through Community Paradigm, we will go out and help you with that methodology, you know, providing some consulting time. I think we indicated 20 hours of consulting time to go out and help, you know, put that methodology together, working with your finance director and the DPW director and town administrator. And then third, you know, in terms of the restructuring, I know that things have moved along to a certain level there, but there's still some ongoing discussions regarding the job descriptions and how that all comes together, and I've indicated to Mike that I'm, even though it's not really in the scope, I'm more than happy to come out, help facilitate that process. And we're always, you know, we've done work for Milis in the past with your budget process and your town clerk... your budget process and your town clerk's office. Uh, you know, uh, we, we like the town of Millis, so we're, we're more than happy to, uh, you know, be available at any time to try to help things along.
A note that our friends from Kleinfelter decided that they had nothing else to do tonight, so they've also been listening too, so they have kind of a, a big picture of, uh, where we, where we arrive, I guess, as a result of your report. So I think if nobody has any immediate questions, if, uh, Mr. Kozinski, do you want people to send you emails? Or Jim McKay, do you want them to send them to you if they have questions, so that somebody's compiling a list of what those are? What makes the most sense?
I would think that they should go to the, um, town administrator's office. I think people would feel mu- much more ease than to get to them.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Is that fine, Mike?
They could, yes, they could send them to my, to my office, that'll be fine.
Anybody else who's on the phone have any questions or comments at all? Well, I want to thank both Mr. Valenti and Mr. Lynch for their considerable effort, um, for the fact that it came organized. I personally found the landscape chart to be really helpful because I could literally go from findings and then go back into the narrative document and cross-reference the expanded background as to how that finding or recommendation came to be. Um, I do want to, uh, re- recognize Deirdre from, uh, the, the DPW's office who did yeoman's work in terms of, uh, crunching numbers and providing a lot of background data that facilitated this. Um, this was a big commitment on the part of the town. I hope that the residents understand that it represents this board's efforts to be extremely, uh, fiscally, um, I wouldn't say frugal, I would say smart, and that we will leverage the best resources to get the biggest bang for the buck to benefit, um, our residents. And, um, we recognize times are tough, and this will be a tool in that effort. So I want to thank you all very much, um, the folks from Care- Community Paradigm and, as well as our folks from, uh, from Kleinfelter, and, um, and wish you all a good night and continued, uh, great health and, uh, and safety and happiness and prosperity. And, um, we're going to turn to the, uh, the final agenda item of our night, which is the fiscal '21 budget, unless any of my colleagues have anything further that they want to add to this. And here...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. You all have a good night now.
Good.
Okay, so judging by the, uh, predominant attendees, uh, still, uh, tagged to our call, um, there is, needless to say, a high degree of concern about the realities of, uh, the global economy and as it boils down to our very hyper-local economy in Millis. Um, there is nobody that is in some way unscathed by what has been going on, and none of it is within our control. Um, the fiscal '21 budget, from the select board's perspective, is about anticipating the work and planning for it, because an ounce of pre- uh, prevention will be worth a pound of cure. Um, we have been saying, we attend the Municipal Management Association conferences, all of us, uh, we go to different workshops, and, uh, and our town administrator, who receives awards for his work, uh, does so as well. I'm going to have him speak to set this up in just a second. Um, but we have been hearing for some time that, you know, as you just heard from Mr. Lynch, government of old is not government of now. And I, it is my personal opinion that we have quite the brain trust on this phone, and that it is up to us to be very bold in our thinking, to not think of things that are limits, but in fact are, are opportunities. And that means we're going to make tough decisions. We have no alternative. We cannot outrun this. We have to get ahead of it. Um, so tonight, what we will do is we will hear from the town administrator, who will outline a very active and dynamic and frankly painful process, where, um, he and our director of finance, Carol Johnston, have been working with the various town departments who are eagerly, uh, on the line to rein in budgets with some very tough, but probably sadly realistic, uh, assumptions as to revenue and, um, and what has been lost against, uh, some of these expenses that have in fact grown. And one of the ways that we will do that is we will try to unify and restructure the relationship between the two units of business, being the municipal and schools, um, into a more homogeneous, um, uh, effort, which has been represented by the strides that have been taken, uh, with respect to collaborative financial, uh, management. So with that, um, I'm going to, uh, offer to Mr. Kozinski to lay out where he sees the budget as of this moment, and I'm going to propose to my colleagues that we have a follow-up budget meeting, um, at the end of next week, by which time, hopefully after May 4th, we will have some amount of information. But, um, all of the town departments and leaders will have heard the call to sharpen their pencils tonight, and we will be able to bring even more, um, details to that discussion. So, Mr. Kozinski, I'm going to turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just first to start, uh, to let the board know it's not lost on me that the board is entering its fifth hour of its meeting, so I know there's a little bit of a fatigue factor, so, uh, I'll start off by saying, um, I will not be asking the board to make any decisions.
A marathon, not a sprint, okay?
Exactly, exactly. So I will not be asking the board to make any decisions this evening, um, in regards to the budget. Uh, the finance director and I would like to share some information with the board, um, go through some of that information, and then answer any initial questions that the board has. Uh, and then, as the, as Madam Chair had indicated, I do recommend a meeting sometime in the latter part of next week, um, after the board has had time to digest these numbers. And there may be some tweaking, further tweaking of those numbers in the meantime, that we could meet, uh, late next week, uh, to discuss the budget in more detail. Um, so, uh, I think I'd like to go through this by first, um, asking Carol, um, if she could just give some updates, uh, in regards to our revenue picture. She, uh, has put together some revenue summaries, um, which outlines, uh, a revenue picture based upon, uh, the current governor's local aid numbers. And she's also put together some revenue numbers based on some scenarios where state aid, uh, is diminished in FY '21. So, uh, Carol, if you like, if you want to go through that, and then once that's complete, I will, uh, go through, uh, my preliminary recommended budget, uh, and just highlight some of the, uh, the big points in there, uh, without getting into the minutia tonight. Um, and then, uh, have the board ask any questions that you might have in regards to any of this information. So if that's fine with you, Madam Chair, I'd ask to turn it over to the finance director to talk a little bit about our, uh, the revenue summary and a breakdown of those numbers.
That sounds great. Thank you very much. And this will be our final, uh, agenda item for the night, everybody.
Carol, you've got the floor.
Maybe Carol's on the floor.
All right, hold on.
Good one.
She's on the line, I know that.
She's on the line, but she must be having difficulty with her, uh, audio, because it says she is unmuted.
Okay.
Maybe you guys can text her. In the meantime, Mike, you sent us a memo, so you could just hit the highlights so that everybody on the phone, uh...
Carol?
Wait a minute, now they just unmuted me, so I should be okay.
Carol, you're with us.
So, great. If Ca- if Karen could put that slide back up, that would be great.
Karen, if you could also stretch it, that would be really good if you could. It's just hard, small numbers.
Bear with me. Hold on. I think I have to share my screen again. Uh, where are we at here? All right. Let me get into, back into it. Ah, don't want to do that. There we go. Can you see it?
I can see it.
Okay, excellent.
So this is the revenue summary, uh, 2021. This was revised, uh, finalized this morning. Um, you can see that, um, the FY 2021 proposed budget, the local, um, taxes are $26,602.26. Our state aid, which right now is the current amount that they're showing through the state, there's no revision of them yet, is $6,510,317. Our available funds are $1,256,680, and our local receipts are $2,621,941. Uh, that brings a total of the revenues to $36,991,764. So that's our total revenue. Then we reduce our total revenues, this is to come up to the, um, town school split. Um, we reduce it by the debt exclusion, which is $3,321,000. Our overlay is re- is removed, $105,000. The overlay is, uh, for when we provide or abatement or exemption for, um, the residents, uh, this is what this overlay amount, uh, is for. So it, it, we have to put in an allowance to cover for anything that we would give to, back to the citizens. Uh, the bond premium is when, um, when, when bonds were, um, gotten at a premium, that we ended up having, um, allowances that were set aside. So it's bond premiums that we received above what we put up for the bond, and this is just, um, it goes against our debt, um, payments. Our enterprise indirects are removed, $597,456. This number is based on the methodology that has been used over the last prior years that Bernie Lynch and Carl Valente were, uh, discussing, that they're going to come in and help us work for a, a, a better, uh, indirect charge starting next year, or actually improving the methodology that's used, so everybody can understand it. Um, our free cash numbers, $311,0248. Uh, our ambulance adjustment, which are, uh, $40,386, and our permit adjustments is $28,651, for total adjusted, uh, $32,448,483. Karen, can you scroll the screen down?
Sure. How's that?
Better. So our shared chargebacks and expenses are, are the charges we get from the, um, state, the county assessment, state assessment, MPT assessment, uh, special education charges against receipts, uh, tuition assessment, school choice, library, um, general insurance, employee benefits, stormwater utility fee, tri-county assessment, and the non-excluded debt service, um, which is $8,417,570. So on, the other reductions that are taken are for the must-fund warrants. Uh, the must-fund warrants, uh, we use our, um, our free cash to cover those, and the warrants, it's these, uh, our recurring warrant articles, uh, every year, with the exception of the unemployment insurance, I think that doesn't get a recurrence every year. But for, for our must-fund articles, they're at $327,000, and we only have $311,000. So we have to, uh, we need an additional $15,967. So our total must-fund, our total shared must-fund comes to $8,433,537. Um, that, for our new revenue available for appropriation, it, it leaves $1,9171. And with the school share, um, at 65%, that's $655,000, $655,961. And if you could scroll the screen down just a little bit more, please, Karen?
Sure.
Then the, uh, town share of that is $353,210. That's, um, as it is this year. Um, the, the select board asked us to come in if, with, uh, additional revenue numbers, if we thought we were going to have a decrease in state aid. Um, could you scroll down to the next page, please?
Oops, there you go.
So with the same, um, revenue sheets, the only change on this sheet is to reduce state aid by 5% and to reduce local receipts by 5%. That's in anticipation of what's going on now, and that we may have to reduce our, our, um, revenue projections. And if you could scroll all the way down, so with a 5% reduction in the state aid and 5% in the local receipts, that would bring the new revenue available for appropriation to a total of 500, $552,558, and the school share would be $359,163. The town share would be 35%, would be $193,395. We've sent this information to the schools, so they know that, uh, we, we've asked them to, um, prepare their budget to have not only, if, if they were, you know, if it were a normal year, also to do a budget in anticipation of having a 5% cut in state aid and local aid. If you could scroll down to the next, this is the final one. Um, we did a 10% reduction in, um, state aid and also local receipts. Uh, that brings, could you scroll to the bottom, please?
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, that would, uh, adjust the new revenue available for appropriation to a total of With the school share at 65%, that would be $62,364, and the town share at 35% would be $33,581. The town administrator and I, we, the town administrator is going to present his budget, which is a balanced budget right now, um, in anticipation of what we have before us now for a 2021 budget. He and I will be working on budgets to come up to the values for a 5% reduction in state aid and local receipts, and also a 10% reduction in state aid and local receipts. Mike?
Thank you, Carol. Um, so, uh, as Carol mentioned, this, uh, what you have here is a balanced budget, um, based on the, uh, first revenue sheet that Carol, um, presented. Uh, that is based on the governor's numbers back from January, so obviously, that's the reason why we, uh, at the board's request, put together the 5% and 10% reductions. But what you have here is based on that original revenue. Um, also, uh, wanted to make clear that in this budget, we have, uh, no use of cannabis sales tax or, uh, cannabis HCA agreement funds. Um, as we've had some discussion in the past, uh, those funds will not be available for use by the town in appropriation until after they are certified and free cash. Uh, so the fall town meetings, there is any of those funds could be used. Um, and again, as, as Carolyn mentioned, we did have some updates to the, uh, revenue numbers, so some of what I'm going to go through is slightly different than, for the board, slightly different than the original memo I sent forth. But just going to touch upon a few of the key points, I don't plan on going line by line. It's probably late in the night to do that. Um, and we can certainly do that in more detail when the board meets next week. Uh, so just want to touch upon seven or eight of the key factors in the budget. Um, under the IT administration, uh, originally, we had sought $50,000 for that new position. Um, I am recommending that be reduced to zero and eliminated, um, but with the addition of $20,000 in the consulting line item, uh, I have spoken, um, with our acting IT director, um, about this, and, uh, based upon the fact that we've had a hard time recruiting, uh, the appropriate person for that position, and in light of the financial difficulties, we feel that we should try to get by another year anyway with, um, with some additional consulting services and not have the risk of hiring an additional person. So based on the, the current economic situation, I'm recommending that that, that setup be put in place and then hold off on hiring, uh, a part-time IT person. Uh, the next item I just wanted to touch upon, um, was the town buildings. Uh, as the board is aware, there is currently a vacancy in one of the facility maintenance positions. Uh, I am recommending that the board consider eliminating that position. I am recommending that the board consider eliminating that position and to bring on a private cleaning company to do the work over at the fire station, police station and library. And we do believe that we can maintain the building at least as well as it was before with that approach while saving the town over $10,000 in, in cost and the cost of a benefit package for an individual. I will be in discussions with the SEIU union in regards to that adjustment should the board decide to consider moving forward with that recommendation. In regards to the police department, as you know, the chief has, had been looking to a new initiative for two new police officers and that first step was approved at the spring town meeting. Obviously, even though there's concern about the new economic conditions we may be under, we had a lot of discussions about the pros and cons of moving forward. And ultimately, based on my discussions with the chief, I believe we should continue to move forward with this proposal based on the fact that even though there's, there's an increase in the budget to do this, if we were to not move forward, we would have to increase the overtime wages in the police department by about $60,000 with no meaningful benefit to the department and services of the town. So that is, that is still currently in the budget for the board's consideration. Just a couple of things in regards to the police department. At this time, the recommendation is to defer 95,939 dollars of the police budget till the fall town meeting, when that could be funded through the cannabis HCA funds. And that would be for the school resource officer and for the required marijuana stipends. The only, the other approach the board could look at would be to utilize stabilization funds for that and put the funds back at the fall town meeting. So those would be two approaches in order to accomplish the same thing. So again, something for the board to think about, you know, before we meet next week to, to see what the board prefers is the best method moving forward. And the one other major item for the police department, after extension, extensive discussions with the police chief, who has also discussed this issue with the superintendent of schools, is the elimination of the school crossing guards, which would generate an operational savings of over $52,000 per year. I think the board is aware that there's been a vacancy in one of those positions for some time. We've had that position posted for many months. We've had no one step forward. So we think it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to continue to fill those positions. And instead of maintaining those positions, after the discussion with the chief, the chief strongly believes that the installation of new state-of-the-art crosswalk lights and signage at those four critical crosswalks would be just as effective in ensuring the safety of the children and it would also be utilized 24/7 versus just certain hours during the week. So those are the major changes recommended to the police department. I would say that the one caveat to that change is we would need between 50 to 60,000 dollars in, in funds to install the crosswalk lights. And as you'll see, when we get to the, look back at the revenue sheets, you can see that there's, even though it's a balanced budget, you'll see that there's 60,000 left in the revenue funds. So if the board wants to look, if you want to look back at those after, the 60,000 dollars is actually within the available funds that could be applied as a capital item. So we, we would not have to use stabilization in order to fund the crosswalk lights. And the, just a few remaining items. I did have extensive discussions with the fire chief. I know the board had, he had presented and the board has expressed support for the chief to move forward with the federal grant program to bring on four additional members of the department. And after a discussion with the chief, it was decided that it would probably be best to wait one, one year to move forward with that initiative based on the uncertainty and the economic concerns of the town. But it's certainly something that the chief would like to keep, you know, in the board's mind moving forward and with the plan that this would just be a one-year delay and that a proposal would be filed this time next year for those, for those fire department Next item is the DPW. There were a few changes there. The summer help, I believe there was a request to increase the summer help. That's been brought back down to 15,000 dollars. And there were a number of other adjustments to the expense line items, which we can go through next week. And I'll be meeting with the DPW director about that. I think we had some further discussion on some of those adjustments to make sure they would work within the department. The next item is the library. There were some minor changes to the library budget, a total reduction of 3,570 dollars to their request. It should not really affect their staffing levels and it, I have spoken with the library director about those adjustments. And also in several of the departments, I've recommended a reduction in the gasoline line item of about 10% because of the downward flow of the gas markets. Again, we'll look at that again between now and next week and I'll be meeting with department heads on, on the, on that item between now and when the board meets sometime later next week. So those are the highlights of the, of my budget recommendations right now. There will be some additional tweaks on it between now and next week, but I know the board has not had an extensive amount of time to read all these materials. So I'm sure Carol and I would be happy to answer any questions you have and certainly you can contact us as well individually between now and your meeting next week with any questions you have as well.
Yeah, it seems to me, and I'm sure my colleagues have something to say, I think there's so much here that it would do a tremendous disservice to all of the work, all of the painful thoughtfulness of the various department heads in coming up and contributing these ideas to simply briskly go through them now with thumbs up, thumbs down, or even a temperature take. And what I would propose as an approach is that with more opportunity to read and reflect that everybody who has interest in this budget package, which could find it at, I would assume on the finance committee's website, I don't know, but as, as it's now a public document, if people could look at it and then direct questions, again by email to probably the town administrator or whomever you want, Mike, to aggregate those questions together. And we can use those questions as a jumping off point because you can come to the table knowing what are on people's minds. And I would propose a budget meeting for the end of next week, maybe like a budget coffee on Friday and we can do it by Zoom and everybody can have their coffee and we can do it at nine or 9:30 if people are around. Normally I wouldn't do a Friday meeting, but I don't know how many people are doing getaways on the weekend anyhow. So that would be my proposal.
Madam Chair?
Sure, please.
I certainly have no problem with a meeting, whether it's this Friday, next Friday or whatever. I have a couple of thoughts and these are just thoughts as I was listening to the presentation. I don't want to preempt Mr. McCaffrey, on the other hand, so if I am, please feel free to go ahead.
I was thinking of Thursday evening with beer instead of...
Well.
I will. I call on the chair's recommendation.
Okay, on that note, I have another couple of thoughts while I collect my thoughts from there. It would seem to me that with the crisis, if you will, the pandemic that we're presently dealing with, and from what I hear, you know, it could in part raise its ugly head again in the fall, it would be of interest to me, I'm not saying how we fund it or anything, but it would be of interest to me to say to particularly the areas of public safety like police, the EMT, fire, even DPW, what do you, assuming you didn't have constraints on the budget, what do you think you really need to meet these needs that you prefer not to defer? I'm not trying to give an open book, but I'd sure like to understand what they feel are constraints on them at this time. Additionally, I would think that, I think I mentioned DPW should be at that. Likewise, I think the schools should tell us that there are specific things they need associated with this. And finally, as I was reading this afternoon, I was noticing how much more effort the library has made to try to meet the needs of the community in these trying circumstances. And again, I'd be interested in what they would like, if anything, as budget requirements. It's not that we have a lot of budget to deal with. I'm kind of saying, put that aside for a moment. Obviously, we don't have enormous amounts of budget available, but I am concerned that we not constrain just to meet budget needs however we see them at this point. What do the departments feel is a necessary level that they would feel much more comfortable meeting needs of the community and then we have to make decisions. I realize we've made an initial cut and I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into any of it. I hope you understand that. I'm just looking for the broadest perspective possible. Thank you.
Mr. McCaffrey, did you want to add anything? Before we have our cable TV folks tell us we're going to get the book, I guess?
No, I mean, I think we need to think through the conversation at the end of next week or whenever the date is. I'm assuming that a lot of the thinking that my colleague had mentioned has already happened so that the, the people are coming forward with something they can live with as opposed to something we browbeat them with. But the, you know, the reality is in any budgeting exercise, the revenue number drives the discipline. And so I think that that's what's happening right here and I, I certainly, I'm interested in, you know, having the conversation and allowing the departments to give us some color But anytime we cut from a request means that a department head said to do their job better, they need X more and as we cut it, then, you know, they are in theory going to give us less than what they could have if they had the resources they need. So, I mean, I think it's basically the same thing. It's just that I, you know, my experience up till now has been that the revenue, you know, drives the discipline and the, the good thinking is incorporated into this. But it can be articulated better, that'd be great too.
So I think what I would like to propose then is for everybody to get some much deserved rest with our gratitude and thanks, that along with the DPW study document, Mike and Karen and, and Jim McKay and Carol, that all of these budget documents get posted, I presume, to the finance page of the website, that say proposed FY21 budget with the date indicating that it is a dynamic iterative document, whatever it is you need to put on there for people to be able to look at, that we set kind of a working deadline. I would say I'm going to toss this out, you know, close a business Tuesday night, close a business midday Wednesday, whatever you guys suggest, for anybody with specific ideas or comments, to funnel them into whatever point the town administrator says. And then they will have two working days to organize those. They'll put all the school questions together, they'll put the DPW questions together, they'll put the restructuring ideas together, they'll ask questions about revenue splits and they'll put those together. And then when we have our coffee and our muffins together on Friday, maybe even in our sweats, I don't know if Mr. McCaffrey could do that, but we're going to give it a good shot, that we can, yes?
Early morning is bow tie time.
Well, I'll, I'll drag, I'll drag out my grandfather's bow tie then. Put together, he taught me how to tie them, I know. I've done many a groom. I will tie to tie, let me just say, sorry about that. What I would like to do is invite everybody to come on Friday to have the leads of this presentation. At this point, I think our town administrator with our director of finance say, here were the 20 themes of questions, we want to acknowledge these. And then to the extent they have instructed, whether it's somebody from FinCom or somebody from a department, to advocate in any way, to me, that seems to be a managed approach. And I would say that this would probably be a three-hour conversation, I can't see it being shorter. So that would be my proposal to everybody and I'm going to leave it in everybody's thought process for, for that as a next step. What do people think?
Why would me?
And I may or may not put Baileys in my coffee.
You may need it.
So that would be my, what?
Do you mean this Friday or a week from Friday?
No, a week from Friday.
A week from Friday, okay.
I'm completely unavailable until next week. Everybody knows what's going on right now. And anybody who's teaching college has no life right now, so.
May I ask a question? Make a comment? Real briefly, for those of us that are fortunate enough not to be retired and still work, Friday mornings really stink. I want to keep my job and I'd like to hear what you have to say. So any early evening, I can probably break loose by 4:30, but I can't miss hours during the workday and not become more of an economic burden to the town. So, and I'd like to hear what you have to say because I think this is an important area.
Well, first of all, the meeting can be recorded, so I think that's the first thing. I have to represent my own, I personally would find it very difficult next week to meet. I just have commitments all the way through that are not really mine to control and I don't, I don't personally want to roll this to another week, but if everybody else wants to go forward and, and meet on Thursday night, I just can't participate.
Craig, I, I am recording all of the Zoom meetings, so I certainly, unless you would have questions for the board during the meeting, then I can certainly send it to you as soon as I have it. That's...
Yeah, I watched the last one and it was helpful to see, but there is something you missed not being part of it.
Certainly.
It's snowing, you just, it's snow and ice with the storm water. I just...
So Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just don't want the, the board, you know, can...
I didn't, he just told me.
Aside tonight on the...
Hang on, we've got some extra audio. There we go.
Got it.
You don't, you can decide tonight on your meeting time, I mean, you can, you can put a tentative time and...
If people want to go forward on Thursday night, we can do Thursday night. I'm also trying to be sensitive to another night meeting. We have a lot of night meetings going on.
Yeah, but I, and, and again, I can work with the board over the next week to finalize the time. I just didn't want the, the meeting to end just without, you know, without stating that Carol and I have been meeting with a lot of department heads for many hours over the past few weeks and I, I just wanted to commend the department heads for their willingness to work with us, understanding the difficult situation that we're entering in and, you know, being team players with the town and trying to work through these budget issues. So I just want to commend all of them for their work in that process. And I'm sure they'll, they'll want to continue to advocate for the departments and, and work with the board as time goes on, but, but my commendation to all of them for being understanding and working with the administration within the anticipated limitations of the finances moving forward, so just wanted to add that.
I don't want to not have FinCom represented at this meeting and Craig, I'm wondering if there's somebody from FinCom who could in fact participate during the day. And maybe you could provide your concerns and comment.
We'll meet Wednesday and we'll see if somebody can attend. The day meetings are very, very tough for most of us. I think there's a few of us that aren't working, but most of us are, are busy doing Zoom meetings, getting paid to attend, not just getting the joy of this.
So if, if people feel strongly about meeting on Thursday night, I'll let the town administrator work out the details, whether it's Thursday night, May 7th, or Friday morning, May...
Okay.
Just Madam Chair, I think it's important that the full board be available for the meeting.
I would, I would concur in that.
I would, I would concur in that.
And this is, this is the decision time, so...
Yeah, I, I would actually, I, it's more important that the selectmen are all represented than um, than finance committee, in my opinion, but we do need, but it, it works smoother if we hear it early and you, we have a chance to have a give and take at, at an open meeting, um, and daytime meetings are tougher, that's why we've always done them at night, you know?
Well, um, uh, if we could just leave, I, I mean, I know for me it's very difficult next week, but um, I guess we'll just put in our preference to the town administrator and let him resolve it, how does that sound?
Are there any evenings, Madam Chair?
No, next week is a joke, next week is horrible, it's finals, I've been administering...
Just asking if there is anything.
No, I need an extra week in my life, next is not it. So um, so we'll just go forward, we'll just plan on uh, if, you know, if everybody wants to do, I haven't heard from uh, the chiefs, I don't know if you have a preference one way or the other. Chief Barrett, chief of fire...
They can, they can email Loring if they want to email us.
All right, how do we do that? Okay, that sounds fine. Um, I'm not trying to be a cog in the wheel of progress, kind of anything but, um, but I definitely have ideas and things that I'm going to put on the question list. And uh, what I'd like to do, Karen, is if you, you're fine with it, is I would like to uh, defer on the um, consent item with respect to minutes.
I, I didn't give you any to look at.
And there you go.
I haven't had a chance to submit them, so, I have them, but yeah.
So we will get back to everybody with respect to a fiscal year twenty-one budget meeting, and in the meantime, any and all concerns, questions, ideas, the bolder the idea, the better, and I will personally give you public kudos for bold ideas, unless you don't want that, um, should be directed to who, to whom? Our director of finance or to the town administrator?
Directing to me, uh, the town administrator's office.
Okay, and then he'll manage what those ideas are and not necessarily identify the source, so we want really unbridled thinking, and we will come together either next Thursday night or Friday morning, and uh, we'll go from that point, so everybody feel good about that?
Yep.
I appreciate everybody's time, we knew that this was going to be a tough meeting, we got a little hijacked on the uh, company presentation uh, front, and we will continue to be, make every effort to really try and contain the uh, agendas because we know we're in the thick of budget season and that's really what needs to demand our attention, so. I appreciate everybody's time, please go and enjoy your late dinners, I apologize for the interruption to your family life, and uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn? Second?
So moved, I'll pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Jermaine?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Barnes, yes, and with our gratitude to all the attendees, thank you very much, and we will be talking with you at the end of next week, take care.